Welcome, everybody. Welcome to the first working board meeting of 2018. I hope everyone had a wonderful holiday season. Hope everyone enjoyed, had a productive and reflective Martin Luther King Jr. Day yesterday, and thank you for being at the meeting. Can we have a roll call, please? Hillburn.
Here.
Chow.
Here.
Tanya Booty.
Here.
Hernandez.
Here.
Cohen.
Here.
Cartha.
Here.
Anya, you have the motion for the meeting agenda?
I move that the board approve tonight's meeting agenda as presented.
Hillburn.
Yes.
Chow.
Yes.
Tanya Booty.
Yes.
Hernandez.
Yes.
Cohen.
Yes.
Mendoza.
Yes.
Cartha.
Yes.
And so we will begin with public comments. Members of the public are welcome and invited to address the board during open public meetings. The Board of Education will not permit the voicing of personal attacks against any district employee. Please remember to state your name and that you have three minutes to address the board. So our first speaker will be Alex Morgan.
Good evening. In tonight's achievement and accountability report, we see that a significant number of students aren't meeting college readiness benchmarks or even making expected gains on the district's various measures of academic progress. And as you guys break down in the data, we know that the bulk of these students are black and brown, and as you like to point out as well, a significant number of students are entering the district below kindergarten readiness benchmarks. For the past few years, OPO, the Organization for Positive Action and Leadership, has pushed for changes in District 65 that will meet the needs and bolster the academic performance of our students. And tonight, again, we call on the superintendent and staff to move beyond the very nicely-stated equity language in your presentation and toward meaningful action for our students. Rather than spinning our wheels with JEH Task Force that we've talked about for a while, I encourage you to go back to the drawing board and develop a plan that will bolster the kindergarten readiness of our students. And if in every report we're going to point to issues of kindergarten readiness and those gaps, then the district must take more urgent action to close that gap among its youngest students. Additionally, I believe positive efforts can be amplified by hiring a more diverse staff, and I believe the district needs to be much more aggressive in meeting this goal. The district can start by hiring a director of black student achievement and empowering this position with a budget and decision-making abilities. I hope that as we see ongoing reports of academic progress, we'll see better outcomes for our students. Thank you, and I have a copy of this for the record as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. Cicely Fleming.
Sorry. Hi, my name is Cicely Fleming. So a lot of what I would like to cover, Alex said so eloquently, but I will just reaffirm that it's quite frustrating to be here year after year with the test scores and such the way that they are. We see very little fluctuation particularly in the Latino and African-American students, and I know that there are a host of things that go into a student's learning. However, as educators and school board members, you are charged with that for our district despite what's happening at the student's home. And so we do expect to see some fluctuation with students, given the home life they might have. However, that should not carry on the way it does in this district, particularly for the amount of money we spend. Obviously, you know, we just had the referendum that passed successfully, and I think that was because parents have a lot of hopes for this district. And I can tell you that I am starting to lose hope with the district, given the long span of this achievement gap. As Alex said, we and others in the community think that a more strategic effort needs to be made. It's very disappointing to hear about a task force for JEH. I understand analysis needs to happen, but from my understanding, that task force will meet three to four times over the year, and I'm not sure what they will accomplish. Meanwhile, students sit in this building, parents send their kids here for preschool learning, and that's not happening clearly by the test results. So I hope that soon we get past the analysis, soon we get past the task force, and we actually start to implement some things in the classroom. Even if we don't see numbers spiking, we understand that, but we would like to see some traction. And it looks like now we are on a downward spiral. And so I urge you all to take this very seriously. I urge you all to be very urgent, and I urge you all to be very creative. Obviously, what we have been doing is not working for all students. And so it's disheartening to know that Fred, whose last name I'm forgetting, left Lincolnwood because he was the one who always talked about the cultural relevant teaching, and now he's gone, and I haven't heard much about that. And now to hear that another African-American principal from Bessie Rhodes is leaving our district is also very disheartening. There's not been really any increase in the teachers we're hiring in terms of African-American teachers. So there's just lots going on that does not leave me, as an African-American woman with a student in the district, very hopeful for her education outside of what I'm able to help her with at home. So hopefully, you all will know that I represent many other people who can't come here tonight, and we can hear the next step, pass analysis happening. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, we will move on to our discussion items, the first of which is a school work plan process overview. So Paul and Maria.
Let me do two, three quick bullets, I promise. One, this is really exciting work, and I just want to underscore that. And I want to thank Maria and her team and our principals and assistant principals who are here tonight, who will be talking about this. It's organic work to really develop school work plans built on the context at the school. So it takes a lot of work to really pay attention to the context of the school and the capacity building that's there. We'll discuss the process, we'll talk about some of the learnings that we have that will spread throughout the district, and of course, we'll hear from two of our schools. And with that, I turn it over to Maria.
That was brief. I hope you guys can hear me okay, and apologies, I'm a bit under the weather if there's some sniffling and funniness. It's also not 2017, in case that just gave anyone a moment of panic. So we're here tonight to provide an update, an overview of our updated school work planning process. This isn't normally something we'd bring to the board in this kind of discussion format, but we wanted to provide an update because it's exciting work, as Paul mentioned. And we believe that school-level planning has a lot of potential to help advance our racial equity agenda and building our capacity across the district to do this work really well is something that a lot of people have aligned on as important, so we just wanted to share out where we are. So I'd like to give a little context on how we got here. This started off as a simple request. John Price asked if I could help design a new template for the school planning process, and I met with a small group of volunteer principals to try to gauge what they thought it was important to capture in an annual plan template. And it quickly became clear that the boxes you put on the paper are great and all, but where there was real interest was figuring out what it takes to put really thoughtful, informed answers in those boxes and where are the supports and resources to do that work in a really authentic and high-quality manner. So basically, what we heard is, you know, if you want a box with reflections on data, that's great, but can you give us some tools, bring the data together in a place, and support us in leading our teams in conversations to put high-quality reflections on the data together? So rapidly, the project expanded, and it became a natural collaboration with the RAD department in terms of pulling together the data and building data tools to support the process. And Andalib, who was a big fan and supporter of the work in his role as principal, is now an even bigger supporter in working with all the principals to build out a stronger planning process. So what we wanted to do tonight to walk through everything is just give an overview of our approach, how we've tackled this work, and a summary of where the planning went this year and where we're taking this work next. Do you want to say a little bit, Andalib, about?
You know, I think it's really important, we think about all the priorities that schools can have, and as we know that there are many initiatives and many indices that we have to be considerably thinking about annually, and what's to say one gets more importance than another. And the most important thing is what are the student results, what are the outcomes that we see happening with students? And so when we think about the research around school improvement planning, it's within the context that we have to think about the specific children and the specific adults and the learning needs of that particular environment. So on an annual basis, to help guide that school's engagement and their thinking about what the learning needs of the adults are in that building, what are the outcomes we want for children and how we want them to be different from this year to the next, it's really important to pay attention to those indices. And so the school work planning process, I would argue, provides this annual opportunity for principals, for the staff, to engage in a much more real and authentic way to think about the needs of that school, within the context of a district priority or prioritization of issues. And so it doesn't exclude any of that, but I think it gives both everybody in that school a sense of like, what's the plan? What's the plan as it's articulated in my school? And it's been really helpful to continue the collaboration that was started by Mr. Price in this way with the school work planning team, because it's afforded us, I would argue, it affords the school leaders an opportunity to have tools that they can then bring in as we think about the most important work around our equity agenda, particularly around black student achievement. And you will hear in a few minutes the way in which that's actually translated into some changes because of this annual reflection and the tools provided.
Thank you. So one of the most important things to cover in terms of our approach to this work has been that we've put the principal very intentionally at the center. So everything that has been designed to support this process originated with our principals and is focused on their role, leading this work with their teams and their buildings. The goals that we set out to accomplish really were to outline our inquiry process, basically build a common language for clarity. If we say we're going to go through steps in a cycle of inquiry, what are they, and can we all make sure we're using the same words for consistency? Build the tools that support the planning process, so give the tools that people need. Promote leadership, not compliance, that's an important one. Annual planning can often be a compliance thing. Here are the 35 boxes you have to fill out that we've decided are important, and you have to fill them out in this order, and check, 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 done, get it off your desk. And the idea here really is that this is all principal-led, so we do fill out a template that's the same, but all the tools are used at the principal's discretion. So if they want to use it, that's great, they have a toolkit, but it's not a playbook that they have to follow, and that's been really central to our approach here. So this slide just covers that a bit, but gives a nod to the schools that have sat at the table. We started off with a small working group of principals from Oakden, Willard, and Bessie Rhodes, and that small group helped us design some tools and supports that we then tested kind of in small, close proximity with their schools. And then, as we learned from their experience, we expanded some of the access to those tools and the process to the rest of the principals. And in doing so, our working group has grown to include the schools listed on this slide. So as I mentioned earlier, what started off as a task to redesign a template ended up going a lot deeper, and as we learned what principals wanted, we landed on a set of design criteria that are listed here. The basic idea being keep it simple, right? I don't want it to be a worksheet, a workbook with 35 tabs, because that's going to drive everyone crazy. Balance, structure, and autonomy, so I want some consistency and common language, but don't tell me every step I have to do in the exact order I have to do it, because that might not be relevant for my context. Build on existing practices and standards for excellent practice, so wanting to recognize that there's already work underway in the district to establish some planning practices. There's already principal evaluation that includes aspects of planning, so making sure that we were aligning to those things and not just starting totally from scratch. And that the work could apply to multiple domains of schoolwork. So a good cycle of inquiry is relevant, whether you're trying to plan around school climate supports or you're trying to plan around academic supports, because the basic process is something that you can apply to any of those contexts. So with those in mind, this page just pretty much summarizes that approach, that balance between structure and autonomy. There are some common elements, everyone has a common framework, we're all going to fill out the same template, but all the tools and supports to help you get there are to be used at your discretion, with the idea being that it's a very customizable planning process. So one of the things we learned from the generous time of the principals we worked with is that every school team is different, every principal's leadership style is different. And it was a really humbling and good learning experience to realize that you can't design one thing, hand it to all of our schools, and expect it to work equally well. You need to bake that flexibility into the process, so that's what we did. So to the structure part, this is the cycle of inquiry steps that we aligned on. This draws upon the work that was already in process with Shelby Cosner and the principals, importantly acknowledging the root cause analysis step. So instead of just going from, I saw this in the data, and I'm trying to go here to have that deeper level of asking why, what might be driving the patterns we see in the data, so we see that as an important step that we wanted to retain. It shares a lot of similarity with other cycles of inquiry, like you could have one more box, one less box. It's kind of okay, as long as we're all talking about the same basic steps of the inquiry cycle. And this ends up being the template that everyone filled out this year. It was aligned to the steps that we just discussed, and the goal for this was that it would be really intuitive. Instead of feeling like a bunch of random boxes to fill out, it would feel like answering a series of logical questions to help understand what we need to do to support student outcomes. So the goal was to make things very intuitive and seamless. So then here's where the autonomy comes in. So how you fill those boxes out is up to you, but we feel it was our job to make sure that you had the resources, access to resources you needed to get there, to get to the point where you felt good about the answers you were putting in the boxes. So we heard a lot of, can you just bring everything together in one place? Like, can I, like hunting for data and gathering worksheets and things, and can you bring it together? So we have this dashboard online, it's aligned to the steps in the cycle of inquiry, and within the dashboard, all these blue links are things that can be clicked on. So, excuse me. These resources mostly came from our principals, they're things we adopted or adapted that they were already doing. This is where a lot of the data tools that Peter's team built came in, so, excuse me, we built data, actual data query tools, data visual tools, put all the reports in one place, so that instead of having to hunt for all of it, it was right there from a common landing pad. We have things in here like discussion protocols, mating facilitation guides, worksheets, things that kind of get to the core question of each step in a sort of one-stop shop. So again, totally optional to use it. If you were starting from scratch and wanted to use everything, you could get to a solid plan by doing so, but if you had something in place in your building that was working really great, you don't have to use this. So that, again, is part of that. As Andalib mentioned, we've made efforts to bake in the racial equity lens to a lot of these steps, so that it's not something you look at after the fact. So for example, we have tools for choosing between strategies. We have a lot of potential strategies on the table, how do we decide which ones we're going to go for? There are criteria in those frameworks around consideration of, do the strategies address racial equity? In the data pattern and root cause tools, we have guiding questions prompting critical thinking about what the data tells us about student subgroups and what the data might reflect about systemic factors driving the opportunity gap. We've also linked in Race Forward Equity Impact Assessment Tool to encourage people to use that as they're thinking about their plan of action. We want to be able to keep this, part of this, I think there's going to be more opportunities going forward to continue to strengthen that tie-in. But I just wanted to call it that I think this is a really nice place to be able to do that, to reinforce the opportunities for school teams to consider equity. Is it, it's just real small? Is that?
It's okay.
Oh, all right. So in addition to the resource of tools on the dashboard, we also wanted to provide principals access to additional supports as they engage in their planning work. So we sort of, in collaboration with our principals, came up with a set of potential services we thought we could offer, and it was kind of a, if we build it, will they come kind of model, like, let's offer these things and see if the need is out there, if people take us up on it. And they did. So we planned a series of workshops. Those were things on topics like school-level data review, five essentials data review, a goal-setting workshop, and we did, offered consultation on plan development and the planning process. We have a mailbox that is staffed by our wonderful Public Interest Program fellows, where people can write in with additional data questions. So I looked at my data visuals, and that's great, but I want to go a step deeper and see this broken out this way, can you do it? And they've responded with really fast turnaround times. Again, a very sort of customer service-focused model to support principals. It's our belief that they should spend their time talking with their teams about the insights from the data and not making their own slides and charts and digging for additional analysis. So our hope was to make that as accessible as possible to them. We've also deployed PIPs to meet with sit teams to do note-taking and synthesis, so if a principal wants to lead a deep data dive with their team, instead of trying to simultaneously facilitate and capture all the insights, we've been able to attend and summarize and give the team back a product. Just many ways to help the team stay focused on what the educators in the room do best, which is have educational insights and talk about what to do and not have to burden them with building slides, making graphs, taking notes, and things like that. So the data right there just shows who took us up on it, so we had a lot of requests for additional support, good attendance in our meetings, and when we surveyed principals at the end of the year, they reported using the resources that were on the dashboard. And this is just a little feedback from that survey I just mentioned. We collected some data on how it's been going. As you can see, the results were really encouraging, so it seems we have, you know, identified a need that people responded to us offering supports to fill. But at this point, I'm going to pause, and don't take my word for it, I guess. We have Jerry Michael and Wayne Williams here to talk a little bit about, and Deborah Osher, to, thank you, to talk about their experiences working closely with us. These two schools have been at the table the longest and have been really dedicated in their focus. Everything that we've done that has been useful to other schools has been because these folks have sat at the table and been really deep thought partners, tested our tools, brought back feedback, helped us make things better. So none of this would exist without them. Long time no see, Oakden. Hello again. They're going to draw straws or flip coins?
Is there any special way you want us to do this?
We gave you chairs, there's a podium, please step up however is comfortable. Look at you, yeah, see?
Mr. Williams, you will be the death of me.
That was masterful.
We've been drawing straws, you know. I thought Oakden comes first because it's oak.
Oh, I kind of set you up there, sorry.
Well, I think you'll hear the same from both of us, because there's a lot of the common words that you've heard so far, starting off by talking about authenticity, and Maria sharing the framework, because what this planning process really helped us do, it gave us a framework where we could have the freedom to be a little bit more creative and also ask harder questions. Because, I mean, any time we would come together, it would be, we'd really find that we were never satisfied with the surface answer, and this gave us tools and frameworks to do it. Let me just, I got a little way to give you a little synopsis here. Use a little mnemonic to help me remember it, but the big thing was authentic use of data, and then what ways, and then how could we boil that data down and distill it into something that we could use, but then also, how does it connect to our overall strategic plan and the district's strategic plan? In particular, what we did at Willard, we made sure that we had a team that was representative of our grade levels and the amount of experience that we had. We wanted a range of experience in teachers and different content areas and specialties. And then we used these tools and the framework to really dig deeper into the hard questions we wanted to ask. So rather than being expansive and trying to do a million things, we really were able to dial down more carefully into the things that were important to us. We try to stay ahead of the curve and try to anticipate what's coming down, because then what we can do is we can spend more time, because significant change takes time. And this helped us to do that, because it let us ask questions like, are we asking the right questions? Are we, what, you know, what role does our bias as educators and as human beings have in, when we go into this root cause analysis? And one of the questions that was asked of us is, you know, what are the tools you could use? And I'm thinking one thing that will keep popping up in our examples is, what is the root cause? Because that's where we can really affect change, if we can correctly identify what the root cause is, so then we can be more active in solving challenges rather than sitting there and admiring them over and over again. So this gave us the framework to do that. And since time is always a big constraint in any organization, but it seems especially with schools, because we're dealing with our most precious commodity, children, and we want to make sure that we get it right, what it helped us do is have a strategic focus over years. We've been digging into anti-bias education and reducing referral risk, especially for our kids of color. We noticed four or five years ago, there is a big disparity, so we set out at starting to reduce that, and over the first couple of years, we cut it in half, and then we've cut it in half again this year towards it's the lowest it's ever been. But part of it is having that framework, so you can, it makes, here's how I know how it's working, is that even though we're getting good results, our teachers are still questioning those results. Even though when we see success, they're like, but why? Is that true? Have we really overcome what we're trying to overcome, or have we just shifted our focus? Are we really doing everything that we say that we say that we're doing? And to me, that's how this process has helped, is because when we get in, I'm notorious for bringing hard questions to the table, but that is what's helped us the most, because when our teachers have asked those questions, we've had resources, we've had colleagues to go to. But most helpfully, it's brought together a cadre of us, because when I see the good work that's happening at other schools, you feel like you're not reinventing the wheel. And when you have colleagues that you could turn to to help us visualize the data and let us look at the data, the information that we collect in meaningful ways, because that's always my question for Peter and his cadre, is you can give me spreadsheets till the cows come home, but how can we communicate that in ways to our colleagues, to my staff, and to our community, so we can keep focused on a few very important things and show progress throughout?
Well, after 16 years of working in the district, this is my first time presenting at the board. I'll also piggyback on Mr. Michael as well. Having that collaborative voice with colleagues is super important. And also, thank you for all the support. I know we've met several times through the summer and at times where school wasn't in session to really, you know, look through data, so that was super important. So one question that we were asked was, how do we approach the school planning process? And at Oakden, you know, I can't speak for other schools, but it was a really unique process, as we learned. Obviously, starting with the data was super important. You have to start at the ground level and figure out what you're working with. So we looked at the data and to think about what were some strengths and opportunities that we had based on previous school improvement plans and where we're at now. We also enlisted key people to help us where we had a collaborative voice at the table. It wasn't just Mr. Williams and I really digging through the data, because we see it from one perspective, but what do other people see? And that's where we really enlisted our sit team as well. When sit would come to the table, we would have conversations again around data and trying to identify what were some key areas that we really needed to focus on. Obviously, we can't bite off too much and really focus more in-depth on key areas of need. So our sit team really did a good job of going back then to grade level team. So our sit team really did a good job of going back then to grade level teams and again, branching out, using more of that collaborativeness with them to be able to bring back their voice to the sit team meeting as well. So that we could narrow down some work that we really wanted to invest in for the year. We thought that was important because if we're asking the teachers to invest in the work, they need to have that voice as well at the table. So around March, we identified some areas and so again, they went back to their teams and then came back to the sit team meeting and then we narrowed down the list to a smaller, to a smaller identified cause. Then, at that point, I'm sorry, I'm just making sure I got all my notes. We met earlier to review. We then really looked at the feedback and then figured out where we're going to move from there. Mr. Williams and I also thought about and identified some opportunities, how we could actually also move this process forward because not only are we in the process, but we're also doing some reflecting on what could we do to improve the process as well as we meet. So one opportunity for future improvement would be to engage more stakeholders such as students and parents based on the needs, the need assessment. Also, looking at the five essentials, student survey pilot information to see where we can identify some more need. And then also, family and community engagement meeting is another opportunity where we feel that we could get some voice and some perspective that we might not automatically get from just being in the school every day by ourselves.
And I would just close by saying that it has been extremely beneficial to be a part of this process. I can't say enough, a lot of what Dr. Osher just mentioned, that really being pushed to think about this process, even as we thought about what we would share tonight, we were overwhelmed by how much we were like, oh, we should have done, oh my goodness, we left out. And I think that's what this process has been all about. And so it's been really amazing. Dr. Osher was course frustrated as we've made another set of action items for ourselves as we really thought through what going through the school improvement plan process was all about. And again, that was just a confirmation for us that it was worthwhile. Another piece that the district should be super proud of, I know that we are, is the expertise of the group that leads this. Phenomenal set of people that are absolutely out of control and, in a good way. The 21st century skills that we're really pushing forward, that's part of our school improvement plan at Oakden, making sure our students have things beyond just the expertise, the creativity, the problem solving. The school work planning team really exhibits that and it pushes us to do the same. So it's an amazing aspect. The tools, I hope you get a chance to dig into those that were shared tonight, they're really amazing. It was great to have things that are nationally, you know, out there, but also to have exemplars from our colleagues right here. Just an overwhelming, you know, tool for us. And again, most importantly, just a reminder constantly that we have a customer service, you know, driven group that are there to turn key things, make data visuals for us almost instantly to make sure that we are definitely having that iterative reflective process that makes any effective school improvement planning process worthwhile. So an amazing group, shining star for the district. You should be very proud.
Thank you. Thank you very much for the presentation. Oh, is there more?
Just, sorry. That's okay. Just real quick, one of the pieces that, I'll be real fast. One of the things that benefit from using the common planning template, which everyone did this year, is that we're able to look across all the plans for common themes and do some macro level analysis of what are our schools focusing on. So this is just a high level snapshot of the areas that the strategies the schools identified are focused on. And two things we've done with this so far, we had a meeting with the curriculum instruction team where we shared this and a grain sized down in more detail with them. And there was a lot of energy in that team thinking, this is great. Now when we are bringing coaching supports and resources to schools, we can help align them to what the schools have identified to focus on because we now know what their top priorities are. So another opportunity to help there be alignment instead of things coming from the central office that may not necessarily map as nicely onto what the school wants to focus on. And then we've shared this with the principals so that they could identify peers who are working on the same strategies and have opportunities to collaborate with one another because they've realized that they're focusing on the same things. So that's that and then, next. And then these are just some of our directions going forward. This is a very organic work in progress. Ongoing implementation and progress monitoring. So, great, you've built a lovely plan. What happens during the bulk of the year while you're implementing it in terms of, you know, life gets in the way and work happens? Where are our touch points and how do we build in the feedback loops to look at leading indicators of how the work is going and loop those back around to reviewing how our goals were met? More incorporation of school equity leadership into planning. So continuing to work with Cory Wallace, she's come in and done some work with the principals while we've been talking about SWP work to think about how we further use this process to drive our racial equity agenda. Further alignment with the school climate teamwork. So this is another area where we've seen good opportunity as we've got teams planning, thinking about holistic solutions to school goals. How can we better align? That's definitely something on the plate for this year that we're working on. I just mentioned the connections with CNI and special service departments and just ongoing professional learning and collaboration opportunities for principals. Andalee has graciously invited us into the principal business meetings with this mix of things that are optional and things that we really think are elevated to maybe everyone should experience this. We've gotten some time and access there to do whole group planning exercises together. I think that is it.
And one more addition, when I'm making my school visits this year, I'm actually using the school work plan as a lens to be able to have a deep discussion with the principal. And then we go into classrooms and we're looking for evidence of where, when there are goals set, what's actually going on in the classrooms. And it's been a very helpful tool and lens for me as I visit our schools.
No, I'm done.
Okay, great. Thank you. Now, now I'll open it up to the board for any questions or comments. Joey, do you want to start?
Sure. The first thing I was thinking about, you mentioned this being an organic process. It's different for each person who's joined into it, each principal, each school, right? They have their own personalities and their own needs, which led me directly to strategic planning and the reciprocity or the symbiotic relationship between the strategic plan and the district goals and the building goals. And what if you had every principal working on this who came up with organic ground level goals that were built by team leaders at each building and the district strategic goals were just so far apart from what buildings are actually saying they need or what they can achieve? And how do we get the counsel as you go through this process to make sure that our strategic goals, right, you're using the SMART template, so you want things that are, you know, attainable? You know, not saying that I want to live or die by the test scores that are in the accountability report, but I want to see student achievement, I want to see student growth and progress, and I want to see market growth. And right now, that's the most oversimplistic way that we can put the measure on a plan. But if buildings are able to do that in a better way, and if they're able to demonstrate growth in a better way, at what point do we shift and counsel us to be more in sync with the buildings or vice versa?
I think that's a great question. I think one of the, we're still honestly exploring it. I think one of the things we learned this year is that it was validating confirmation that we saw a lot of strategies emerging from the schools that mapped nicely onto strategies that are supported in the strat plan. I think it's going to be a combination of when the district has identified district level strategies, meaning things that we've got resources to back something that there can, you know, schools can draw upon, resources and peers and things that are kind of in motion versus having to go invent their own solutions. There's some sort of economy efficiency and collaboration afforded by that. We just have to make sure we've picked the right things. So we do see some validation and schools are surfacing those things. And as we see additional things that might surface, part of the beauty of allowing the autonomy that we have is that we hopefully won't stifle emerging unique perspectives from surfacing. So if we start to see there's a real organic interest in something that we're not necessarily supporting, then that is going to be a flag that as we continue to build our work plans going forward and think about how we're conceptualizing our strategic work, that's a piece of information we can and should be taking into account. So I think it can work kind of both ways. Here are the districts centrally supported things that you can draw upon if we're all trying to address some common goals, but we can also learn from the schools in terms of what they're elevating as their priorities.
And do you guys have, as a cabinet, the reflection time to sit back and think about that? You know, as you jump into, at some point, there's a tipping point, you're working with people who want to be doing this right now. And I'd like to assume that all building leaders want to be doing it, but these people opted into it. And at some point, everybody else gets on board because it's their turn. And that's a different planning process when it comes to school improvement. And finding a way to take what you've done successfully with the people who wanted to opt in and go on that rough journey with you and start to smooth that out so that it's easier for the other people who, you know, weren't so ready for the various reasons that they might not be. You know, that takes a lot of time on your end to sit and think, you can't just jump into the meeting and say, hey, let's move this one out today.
Right.
So part of that is the role of coaching in supporting those principals who may either be completely invested in the process or who may have their own process, but there's opportunity for better alignment or better understanding about how to get to more profound use of the information that's then translated into relevant and meaningful plans for the school, right? And so a plan doesn't necessarily mean that we also have action that's related to that plan. However, the clearer the plan is and the better aligned the understanding of what the problems, the site based problems are versus whether it's the personnel, whether it's understanding the instructional demands that the children are needing. And so you don't see anything instructionally emerging in a school work plan, that's the role that coaching and essentially high level communication. And I think, you know, this is the work, right? So this is the most important work, I would argue. So I don't think it's that there is this time. I think it's actually, this is where we want to be spending our time and I think that this is where our priority is around this.
And I think without Andalee championing this in the larger principal group, we might risk staying in our little coalition of, you know, the think tank, the R and D team. But Andalee's been really encouraging of bringing this back to the principal meetings and saying like, no, like this is baked enough, let's touch base with everyone so we don't go too far and we can, you know, bring everyone along with us with the kind of feedback loop with the smaller groups. So I think that's been really important as well.
Awesome. Sounds like a great process and a great process that is cyclical, so it's not a one and done.
Yep.
So I know that you've mentioned a little bit about the resources that you pull into the sit teams, setting their goals. And I think, I want to know the community, the school community's involvement in developing of these goals. We talk about essential fives. Unfortunately, not everybody fills out the essential fives and oftentimes, there's voices that are missing from that information. And so as principals are putting this goal together, it's easy to, I think, set goals based on your strengths and it's easy to set goals based on internally what you see your school is capable of doing versus maybe a 360 point of view and how you're viewed by, you know, in this case, your customers, your students, your parents, your community members. So I'm just a little bit, I'm curious as to how that's drawn into the process and also how the plan is communicated to the school community at large.
Those are great questions and actually should have probably been on the next step because bringing in family voice and student voice has been something we've been talking about. We started with wrangling the data inputs and the things that we had access to and that's been something we've kind of identified as on the horizon, how to help school teams. And actually, Paul and Andalee and I were just meeting about this sort of relational part of that in the school community. How do we, you know, each school has a sit team and how the principal manages that team may differ. But in terms of the broader school community, what does the engagement look like to make sure that voices of dissent are at the table too and we hear the perspectives that aren't just the things we agree with? So I would say we don't have a great answer yet, but it's definitely on the radar for our next frontier. And in terms of communicating things back, one of the things we did this year was, there was the planning template that you saw, but then we also created like an at a glance one pager version of a school plan that was meant more for maybe broader sharing with the broader school community, even with parents. And that was something that we made, I think I listed it in the services but didn't touch upon it, we made available to them if they were interested in building one of those one pagers, that we would help them take their more highly technical plan and draft it into sort of a more tangible conversation starter to talk with the broader school community about the areas of priority. So that's another area where we tried to take what may be a desire to do that and provide a tool or a support to help a principal get there. But I think those are all areas that we can continue to strengthen, to be honest.
So currently, are there community members that are part of the sit team? Are there parents? Are there, is there anybody non-faculty that sits on those teams?
Do you guys have?
Jerry?
I can give you an answer from a school-based perspective.
Do you mind coming up to the microphone for our viewing public?
So when we look at school improvement planning, we, and I would say that, just talking to my colleagues, this is, I would not guess that we're the only ones doing this, but we explicitly do not look at our strengths when we build a plan. We looked at what's the hardest thing that we've got to fix. And usually, the best source of that information is using the five Es, but it's using our personal contact with parents and community members. We typically don't have parent members on the school improvement team, but we do have other groups that we bring in both formally and informally over the course of a year, over the course of multiple years to serve as a sounding board. So we don't do it in isolation. We say these are things that are the things that we're fixing, even if they're embarrassing for us to bring up. But if they're embarrassing for us to bring up, then that sure as heck is something that we probably need to be working on. But we work hard not to do it in a vacuum from our community. I would say though, that is one of our weaknesses, is that we need to do a better job of communicating how we involve parent and community voices by publicizing when we stumble, publicizing when we're successful and publicizing the steps that we take and do a better job of that.
So that is one of the areas that I would say also that the racial equity impact assessment tool has helped identify in working with the school work planning team. We've identified that as an area for, an opportunity area that's being taken on and thought about. But it also requires the right approach and avoiding tokenism and approaching communities to get input. And so how do you do that in a more thoughtful way? And that is why the, I would argue that the work that the principals engaged in this year around their equity leadership development in terms of the implicit bias work, reviewing the equity impact assessment tool and then thinking ahead is foundational work because you can't just jump into saying, oh, let's go and get input and think about the way we do this. You have to think about it in a really profound way. The also other part of that is the school climate teams. One of the things that the school climate teams have, the work around that, I would argue has a progressive process to raise the level of the staff to think about how we're engaging our parent community in a thoughtful way. So it's not, so going through relationship building, thinking about safety and then moving towards bullying and then thinking about the way in which parent engagement occurs. So we didn't start with parent engagement, that's a part of the journey, but it's not the first thing.
And then just one more question. As we, as you compare the individual plans for the schools and then you talk about our mission as a district, is there coaching to include those, you know, those mission items into the planner or is that something that you're looking for? Most specifically, I'm thinking about black and Latino student achievement. So we know that that's an area that as a district, we're working on and that we need to improve. And so is that something that's automatically included in each of the schools' improvement plans? And is there coaching provided in that area? How do we really look at the data from each individual school and see the areas that are in need of improvement and how are we coaching schools to really work on that?
I think that's a great question. In terms of the data review step, we've definitely tried to bake that in as prompting a critical lens on our data from that perspective. In terms of, is it automatically part of every school's plan? We didn't require a specific plan focus this year. We did have conversations about it. What we saw after the fact was that most of our schools either have a goal or a strategy specifically focused on racial equity. So either they have a subgroup specific goal around black or Latino student achievement or they have a strategy that's around culturally relevant teaching or something like that. So we saw those areas of focus emerge. We've gone back and forth on We've gone back and forth on, in terms of balancing that structure and autonomy, do you say you have to have a strategy around this? Or do you let them see what happens and give them coaching opportunities with Cory and in their principal business meeting to coalesce around those goals as a natural district priority? I see it emerging. I've also had some conversations with principals who have, who are really working through it with their staff in terms of, right now, we're going through the staff capacity building process in terms of people doing seed and BD. And principals have said, you know, we want to name a goal on this, but until my staff has done their training, do I want to have my staff saying, we're going to really double down on achievement of Black students and my staff hasn't gone through their training? I haven't built critical mass of racial literacy for my staff to be able to, you know, access the language and the tools to enact those strategies well. So ideally, I would like to get to the point where every school plan has a focus on achievement for Black and Latino students. That's where I think we should be. I think we got real close in this first year of everyone filling out the same framework by not specifying it. It showed up. I think that with the next year and our push around training and our increased focus, I expect that we will see that in our plans across the board without having to mandate it.
But it's a really interesting question. If there are non-negotiables that you have as a leadership team who supervises and evaluates school principals, who in turn do the same for their buildings, again, you're working with people who chose to opt in, chose to be vulnerable, chose to go through the process with you. But if you're looking at a building and saying, right, Mr. Michael was talking about how they cut in half the discipline referrals for students of color. You're looking at a building and saying, this is a critical area that I see for this building and it doesn't pop up, where's the stopgap within this process to say, maybe there isn't a choice here? Or again, is that the coaching? And where's the lever of accountability from those that supervise the process to say, you know what, as we go through this, I just want to make sure that everyone knows this one's not optional, but I want to know what else is festering here? Like, I get wanting to wait, but privilege says let's wait until we're more comfortable with it. I'm wondering, like, where does it?
I want to toss that down the loop. I want to say that all the principals, even the ones we weren't working with, when I mentioned that we see it in almost all the plans, that's beyond the small working group. That's across everyone. So everyone, even those who weren't part of the group, worked with the common template this year and accessed the tools this year. And so where we see that in almost all of our plans, that was not just among the small group of the willing. But I know we've talked a little bit about thoughts on, as you coach and review plans with schools, so I want to get your thoughts on that.
How much time do we have? You know, I would say that yes, all of our plans addressed equity or, and an element of a strategy related to how we're supporting our Black and Hispanic students. And so that there's various, whether it's articulated through multi-tiered systems of support or articulated through thinking about the way in which our school climate work is happening. So writ large, I would say that there was a big involvement. No Child Left Behind, have you heard of that law? We had, was directly the same concept, right? So what's, that this was the reduction of this achievement gap was the priority of NCLB, right? It's been a priority in this nation for a long time. And I lend, I bring that up only to say that it's always this balance of accountability versus process, right? And so what I would say is that I think that the school work plan affords a step. I don't think it's a panacea. I think it's a step that's been thoughtfully developed with our practitioners in the field to begin to say, what do you need to be successful in guiding school change? And so far, and I don't have to worry, well, I don't say worry, but if you're looking at the right, if you're looking at the same data we're looking at, we know there's a problem that needs to be addressed. And so if a principal decides or a school team decides that they're going to go over here and we're seeing it over here, we've got to ask why. And I think that's, we don't have to be afraid, so to speak, of that, you know, division or perception. I think we have to ask the question and we have to be, we have to trust that we will ask the question, why? As a district, we will ask the question, why are you choosing to go in this direction when we have information that's here? And I think that's the difference between something like this versus a checklist where, you know, there are lots of people who are constantly thinking about, this is the mandate, this is the accountability, we need you to get to this point. And then we wonder, why would we don't get there? Why don't we get to the change we're looking for, yet culturally relevant teaching and this focus was on this board strategic plan back in 2008? So what happened then with all the urgency that was present then, why didn't it change, right? So I would argue that it's really important not to wait, not to not respond, but rather to think about, are these steps moving towards really identifying the needs and those individual school-based processes that are going to help this? And I think the school work plan provides some tools. Again, I want to say this is not a panacea. This is a process that the school work planning group is constantly thinking about and shifting. And I think you raised some important points. I just want to address the SIT. The SIT is not, the School Instructional Team is a structure that's a part of the union contract with the district and involves a distributed process that brings members of the school together along with the school leadership. And so there are parts of that that we're starting to unpack in terms of what do we need to do differently in terms of the design of the SIT, in terms of whose membership is on the SIT. We're working with our union partners to think about the tools and how we're doing relationship building around the SIT so that we can have a more comprehensive view. The school work plan is really more about thinking about the general process for bringing the information together in a way that people can all access and then get engaged in. And I've seen teachers, I mean, I've seen principals now sharing that with their communities. The parent advisory structure is one that many schools use to different degrees, so I'm not going to say it's the same everywhere I'm finding, but that is another process that helps inform, as Mr. Michael shared, information that then goes back to the SIT team, say, the parent advisory group, we heard these important priorities emerge from parents, we would then bring that to school improvement planning process.
Two other issues. In the three other school districts I've worked in, the school improvement planning process sits on somebody's computer and on an annual basis before they run into their supervisor like Dr. Belgotti, they boot it up, they change the dates, they tweak it a little bit and then it's handed in. And so the, just paying attention to the deep analysis and the root cause analysis especially is a real advance for us. And I think, you know, again, we've got to keep pushing it. On the organic nature of this, in each of the schools that I've visited this year, there is a goal for student performance. There are goals that are disaggregated by race and they're very specific about the goal that the principal and the team wants to move forward on. So that's, there's evidence there and then we want to get to the point of really pushing it even more as we focus even more on Hispanic and Black achievement.
Great. Thank you. I think the other thing I would just want to highlight is that, keep in mind that these plans were made last summer and we've made some pretty substantial strides between then and now in terms of our equity learning offerings. And so these plans were begun at a time when not all principals had had a chance to attend Beyond Diversity, all assistant principals hadn't had a chance to attend Beyond Diversity. We only had 60 people who had been part of a seed cohort. We only had maybe 50 or 100 people district-wide who'd been through Beyond Diversity. And so to some of what Maria was talking about earlier, not all the people around the table had the benefit of speaking the same language in terms of having courageous conversations about race, which we believe in the upcoming year will make a real difference for the school teams to be able to have these discussions about what do we need to do for our school in order to advance equitable outcomes when folks now have the skill to engage in dialogue about race at a much deeper level.
Better said than I said, but yeah.
So I just had a couple of things. I wanted to, one, start off with a quote from Dr. King, given that yesterday we honored his life and legacy. Quote says, now that, now I realize that there are those, excuse me, there are those all over who are telling us that we must slow up, but we cannot afford to slow up. We have a moral obligation to press on. We have our self-respect to maintain. But even more, we can't afford to slow up because of our love for America and our love for the democratic way of life. We must keep moving. We must keep moving or keep going. So I wanted to bring his legacy into this moment because a lot of the work that we're discussing wouldn't be possible without his leadership and legacy. I also wanted to start off by saying that I think that I'm happy to see collaboration and action in this process. I think we've talked a lot in the district about where collaboration doesn't exist and the frustrations that that causes with different stakeholder groups. And there's always room to grow in that way. But I think that in terms of putting action to words, this is certainly a good step to allowing discussions to not only go top-down, but to be more responsive to one another. I did have, I think, some of the same questions that Rebecca was alluding to in terms of other stakeholder conversations. It's certainly, I'm sure, a breath of fresh air for principals who are able to use this tool as opposed to a checklist and possibly the SIT teams. I wonder, the composition of the SIT teams, is that primarily licensed educators?
Typically, yes, absolutely.
So I think, given that this is a work in progress and acknowledging the important progress that has been made, I think two questions of timing came up for me, which is, when is the timing of stakeholders being brought in, right? Because if you're a stakeholder that's brought in at the beginning of the conversation versus a stakeholder that's brought in at the tail end in order to reflect on a pretty well-defined conclusion, that's certainly going to impact how much you want to engage in that process, how important you feel like your voice and your influence is. And sometimes we also indicate the hierarchy of what we think is valuable by when we bring people into a conversation. And so if our licensed staff are brought into the conversation prior to our unlicensed staff or prior to parents or prior to student voice, I think the implication might be that those voices that are included later are less important. And I think that, given that, we want to not just talk about collaboration, but be about collaboration, thinking about how that happens. Of course, things get messier and more confusing, the more voices and the more people you have at the table. But also, how valuable is that content? And if it's messy, is it necessarily messy for learning and for connection to occur? So those were questions that I had in terms of timing of when stakeholder voices are, what stakeholder groups are included and when they are included. I was happy to hear mention of the culture and climate team. I may have missed it, but I don't think I saw it on the dashboard as a hyperlink. Oh, no, I see it under activities, I think, under data review. So anyway, I was just curious, again, what's the timing of including these different stakeholder groups? Because instruction is certainly important, but thinking more broadly about, oops, about the whole child and bringing in the whole school and culture and climate of the school is important and influences heavily the instructional experience that everyone's having. I think the other question of timing I had is, when equity becomes part of the conversation? So I noticed that the Equity Impact Assessment Tool is listed under Strategy Identification in terms of strategy to respond. But in my mind, I would imagine that a tool to process how equity is part of the root cause is important. And so I was curious to hear more about what equity lens is used. Is there a formal equity lens to look at root causes and help people root out assumptions and unconscious practices?
So I'm going to go in reverse and you might have to remind me what a couple of things you said were. But the equity, what we've done is, a lot of the tools that we've adopted or adapted, that was one of the main adaptations we made, was to add equity in. So in the data review tools, for example, there's guiding questions about patterns we observe. And when we do the kind of multiple whys, we ask, you know, what do you see across subgroups? What might observed differences reflect about how different students are having different experiences in the learning environment? What structures may be causing different students to have different experiences? How is this, you know, rooted in institutional racism? Like, kind of, you know, like, but that gets added on when we talk about, how do we think about which strategy, which strategy to pick? That's like a new row in the sort of rubric that we included. So a lot of times it's like baking that in as another piece of those, but it starts as early as the pattern identification and the data and the root cause work and goes all the way through the strategy identification. And then if you go forward to implement, think about the implications of what you're about to implement in terms of the Race Forward tool fitting at that point. And I think there will continue to be more opportunities to put that in there. With regard to other stakeholders, like I said, definitely something we want and should be doing more. Our focus so far has been on building principal capacity to lead this work and get their arms around their data and build their own toolkit around their literacy of their data and the steps in planning and things like that. But I think absolutely if you're going to get your stakeholders involved, the earlier the better. So I think that is a guiding principle we should add as we go to bake that in. And with regard to the climate team, the timing is one of the things we're really trying to sort out a bit. The timing, there's some months on the dashboard that I think we're looking to overhaul already in terms of, right now with our current planning timeline, we've got people spending a lot of time over the summer planning. And that planning kind of flows into the beginning of the year and we want to back things up so that as soon as the data hits in the spring, planning work is underway so that when school starts, the plan is in place ideally and syncing that up with the cycle of planning that's taken place in the school climate teams. So we recognize that we're having to bridge some work that started off on parallel tracks and bring it together. And timing is going to be part of bringing that together so that climate's not an add-on or SWP's not an add-on, but they go together. And what we've also seen happen this year is that a lot of the plans have both climate and academic instructional-focused things in them. So that sort of, our call, the principals have said, you know, we want to see this brought together more, but also it's just evident that when the teams are discussing these issues, they're not sticking to one lane and saying, hey, we're only going to look at this from an academic instructional lens. They are thinking in terms of, what about school climate? What's going on there? So we need to bring our structures together to help align that time. I think that's the next step for us.
Mr. Williams.
So on the data visuals, the school climate, there are several surveys that are baked into that process. And so when you look at those data visuals, all of the stakeholders are a part of that. And so a lot of the data review that we talk about, that's where their voices are heard. So inasmuch as they're not always physically seated at the table as a member of the school improvement team and so forth, that data is super robust. And so the school climate team survey piece that we tapped into all of our school staff has been very helpful there. The Race Forward document that you mentioned, one of the first tenants, I don't know if it's the first one, because I don't want to misquote, but I think it is the first one that says that you've not done your due diligence if you don't have representation from all of your stakeholders in some form at the table, because there's no way you can make a decision for an African-American male student if you don't have an African-American voice at the table. So it's super important that you lift that and that's why I think it was added, because it's a major piece. Another thing that's really started this year is that we were offered the autonomy to have the student version of the Five Essentials survey. So two schools are doing that. And so now the Five Essentials survey that you'll see for our schools will have all five elements lived out, because as you know, for the elementary, you only see three. So two schools that you'll see at the end of this school year will have that piece added and it goes to the student voice part. Many of us have tried some other different ways to make sure they're at the table, but having that added is a super big bonus. And then one of those specific elements is academic press. So you'll see what African-American students have to say about the quality of their teaching or you'll see how Hispanic little girl may say, you know, how safe she feels at school. All of those things are baked into that and it's empirically based feedback that we're going to get. So lots of spaces and places, lots of room for improvement, but a lot of that's already there.
Thank you. I just had a couple more things. In terms of stakeholders... In terms of stakeholders inclusion, we've also heard feedback in terms of teams being appointed on occasions. And other times, self-selected is at the... And so I think that that makes a difference too in terms of what committees and teams are working on this within the school building and how much buy-in folks feel is there based on if they feel like folks have been appointed because of historical relationships or perception of performance, et cetera, versus having self-selected or everyone having been invited to be a part of that. And then I think I was curious to hear a little bit more about the Common Language. And particularly, we talked as a board about having a glossary to add to our Equity Impact Assessment Tool. And so I'm curious if there is common equity language and definitions that you all are utilizing in order to have these equity discussions, especially if you're talking about them at the root causes.
Yeah, I mean, I think what I would point to, we don't have a specific glossary, but we've had a lot of common learning experiences. So Corey Wallace has been consulting with Andalib and has developed a series of learning opportunities during the course of the year, starting with several full days before school began. And the cabinet has been part of those learning experiences in addition to all of us having been through Beyond Diversity training. And all, not all of us, but many, both administrators and principals having been through the CEED experience. So because of the common learning experiences we've had, I think what I'm noticing is that there is a lot of commonality among leadership at this point in terms of some of the different concepts related to racial equity and dismantling racism. And I think our next step really is in ensuring that all the people who are part of the sit team also have opportunity for the same learning so that we're all speaking in the same language.
And then the last question I had was just, you know, all of the participating schools for the pilot except for one, which is Bessie Rose, were elementary schools. So have the adaptations worked well? Or what kind of additions or changes were necessary for magnet school and middle school participate, or use of the tools?
So the first piece was just broadening their data tools, right? They have different assessment data and different starting point information that we made available. We've had some good conversations specifically around how do you bring in magnet programming? Questions that are specific if you're a TWE school, for example. And I think that's honestly further customization that needs to get built out. I mean, I think that we're working with sort of the base model. And then I think we built that based on the insights and reflections from the principals who were generous enough to sort of beta-test our tools. And then the goal is then, as that spreads out to more principals, we will be particularly tapping those principals, like the other middle school principals, to understand. So what about this was or wasn't relevant to you? And what do you need in terms of that customer service focus? Not assuming that this model necessarily will fit them perfectly.
I think it's also part of why we have the suite of sort of consulting or support services. So that when a school needs something in order to complete their planning process that isn't part of that base set of supports, they can reach out to us. And so for a number of schools, we did some data crunching. We worked, for example, with some of the schools with TWE programs to look at how to think about kindergarten readiness differently, given that the English learners are taking a slightly different assessment and that there are a couple of different sets of norms. So a lot of times what we're doing is taking requests and filling them, but also looking at the ones that are coming in frequently or looking at the ones that could have utility across schools and then using those to develop the next suite of tools. So especially on the data tool side, a lot of what we have is that we put out a base model and then we went and tried to use it with folks. And where it worked, we kept it, and where it didn't work, we refined it. So we continue to do that.
Thank you.
Just a quick question, I'm curious how that information sharing is taking place? So if a plan, if a school has their plan and they want to know what another school is doing, do they have to go to you and ask questions about another school's improvement plan? Or is that kind of like free information for principals to look through other plans and see maybe if other schools have similar?
Definitely not gate-kept through here. So we are purveyors of tools and resources, not keepers of that. I think that would be something that they have done when we did a session in the principals' business meeting, asking them to sort of identify peers who are working on similar things. Chances, they could ask each other to see their plans. We've also asked some of the principals, kind of in the other way, who we've worked very closely with, if we've been meeting with another principal who's maybe struggling with something similar, we've said, hey, can we send your plan along or bring your plan to a meeting with this other principal and use it as an example to walk through some of what you've done? So we've done a little cross-pollination, just in terms of trying to help people see examples. But any principal could ask any of their colleagues, hey, I want to learn more about your plan, I want to see it.
Okay, it's a really neat tool. It's very user-friendly, it looks really nice. I just think it's important, like historically, you know, when I think of the work that I do, it's always nice to be able to reference back to challenges and successes too, to be able to share. And I just hope that that information is readily and easily available now in the pilot and then just moving forward to be able to isolate some of those good successes and some of those challenges and how we accomplished it and be able to look back on it, you know, 10, 15 years from now and have that information available.
I hope we're able to see a progression of how plans have evolved in the district. And I think part of having that, the framework and getting everything kind of cleaned up in how we package our plans is going to allow us to do that, looking across schools, looking across time in a way that when things were a little more loose or changing year to year, we weren't able to do as much. So I hope this is setting some groundwork for us to be able to take the long view that you're talking about.
I just want to come into on trying to get some work that, again, allows our instructional leaders, because that's what principals are, right? I mean, they should be these instructional leaders that are the top teacher in every school. And they should have the flexibility to not be bogged down by, you know, get the checklist like you mentioned, but having a framework to work off of where they can work with one another and exchange ideas and strategies on how to approach student achievement and community engagement. You know, some of the principals mentioned, I mean, again, that that is something that is emerging. It's something that I think is, I think it's a given, right? That we should always, you know, I've always thought as schools, and particularly public schools, as community centers, right? It is the heart, they're the hearts of our communities. And I really think that this is a really great framework and all it needs is that tweak, right? And then kind of trying to bring in family, family and community engagement and voice to these conversations always. At the very beginning, like my colleagues have mentioned, because again, I think it's, again, it is this, it's most of our neighborhood schools, and you can talk to any of our parents at their nearest schools. And of course, you know, we've seen how many have come up and talked passionately about how they love their schools, their teachers, their principals. So again, it's just, it should just be a given, right? So how do we turn that energy to help inform school improvement? And again, really trying to seek out the voices that, again, can't be here, you know, with us to talk about, you know, how we can improve education for their particular students. You know, I had been involved as a teacher in CPS, I know they have, of course, they have a school improvement process. And that, you know, what they would do, they would consult with their local school councils. And as Mr. Colgotti mentioned, you know, that is, you know, some of the schools already do that to varying degrees. I know there's already some structures, I know we have the African-American Caribbean Parent Advisory Committee. We have the BPAC, Bilingual Parent Advisory Committee. So those are some structures that we can look at. And then perhaps, you know, present to them some of the ideas that are kind of floating around and have them weigh in on some of these school improvement plans. I know at JEH, you know, there's a couple of parent groups that meet, as well as in some of the middle schools, you're starting to see parent groups that are starting to merge. So again, as we think about this work, you know, there is, you know, there is, there are these structures and groups of parents who normally aren't engaged that are starting to come together. And just thinking about that, as principals, you do the work, you know, kind of seeking that out. And also strengthening what we have, right? So, you know, the way I understand how BPAC, for instance, should run is that there should, it should be a model or a structure that creates leadership. So the BPACs should have officers, right? I can tell you, I've been part of statewide bilingual parent advisory committee meetings where we gather those families. And a lot of times, that isn't the case. A lot of times, the, you know, BPACs turn out to be these, you know, parent groups where they're told what to do, they're talked out to. And then they're asked to participate like in a multicultural activity for school and that's it, right? And I think that's something that all districts across the state can do much more work on in regards to improving those structures to ensure that we provide leadership opportunities to our parents so they can weigh in on a lot of our school district decision-making and local school decision-making. Again, I'm a firm believer in, again, school, you know, however more grassroots you can make it, and I think this is a very organic and grassroots approach and framework that you guys created, which is great. I think the better. So again, whatever we can do, and I know this is a work in progress, but I think we're going down the right route. It's just, again, making, you know, I echo what my colleagues say is that we have to work very hard to ensure that we have those voices at the very beginning of parents and family members who are impacted by the decisions we make.
Thank you, yeah. I think my sincere hope is that with a solid foundation and improved capacity to do planning work, schools and their teams are going to be better equipped to do something with that input that they get from their stakeholders too. They're going to be able to incorporate it into a plan for action in a way that's coherent and actually drives changes in practice because they've got this sort of enhanced skill and foundation to building their plans. So I think that they will work really synergistically as we continue to build this going forward.
Also, I'm thinking, Dr. Goran, to ask a critical question publicly, you have to praise publicly too. I was thinking about my earlier question about where's the accountability for certain types of things in the plans? And listening to you answer all the questions and describe the process, thinking about the investment in Beyond Diversity and seed and building capacity, which you've mentioned several times, what are the first outcomes you look for? And I guess one of the first outcomes you look for are staff sitting together and thinking about these things without them being told to think about them, right? And that's a really, that's a really great thing to highlight, that it is happening. And my fear would be that we put them up there to think on their own and people don't think about it. But you're telling me that it is happening and that you do have benchmarks or, you know, nets underneath to make sure that things don't fall through, and that's a really great part of the process. So thank you for that.
Absolutely, I actually will say that. I had the fortune of unpacking one of the schoolwork plans with one of the principals. And they landed at a very focused attention on Black student achievement, particularly on boys and on males in their building. And we unpacked it, and it was really, as we unpacked the narrative of how that team landed there, it was through this, the team understanding and uncovering as they use the tools of diagnosis, as they looked at the data, as they thought about the root causes and the problems, that's exactly what happened. And it was really, it was a testament to both the importance and the urgency required for putting these kinds of tools into the hands of practitioners, but also the importance of the mind shift required to get there, right? So it's one thing to just prescribe, it's another for people to discover. So thank you for highlighting that.
This is our really intentional effort to build capacity and to build capacity towards action. And if we don't get towards action, then we're sunk. And that capacity building is different than building compliance. And again, the questions tonight are really important for us to go back and think about, which is, when do we put some issues that might be required on this? And when's the right timing to do that? And especially if they don't come out organically.
Yes, one quick question. Does JEH do the same process?
We have started having conversations with how to support them and that their data would be different. So we have to catch up in terms of where their starting place would be. But we've had a couple of meetings with Amy Small, in charge of downstairs, to get her folded in.
I mean, I think that would be extremely important in light of, you know, all we've been talking about and what we will be talking about in a couple of minutes.
Yeah, I would strongly echo that point.
Absolutely.
I mean, it's just a makes sense connection. So I would hope, also based on the focus groups that were held for early childhood, something that I think the small group that was here was very adamant about accountability and what's the plan for improvement here at this school, because it is a school.
I would just add to that, that there's the zero to three programs as well. And so, again, different metrics, but given what we know in terms of what contributes to the gap in opportunity to achieve, not looking at the zero to three, but only looking at the three to five would probably be a missing, missed opportunity.
Yeah, and I just want to, again, we, I want to piggyback on that as well. I really think it's important for folks to, in particular, our instructional leaders, our principals, to know, again, the importance of, again, the beginning of a child's educational journey, you know, which is usually through a zero to three or three to five programs. I think it's critical. And I know some, a lot of the, my work, my day job is doing work around early childhood for the state board. And, you know, again, that's one of the things that pops up is that, again, much of our leadership, particularly their K-12 schools, really don't realize the impact that prior early childhood experiences have on children and the quality, right? And how do we continue to quality, or where is there a, perhaps a gap between the transition from early childhood to our K-12 systems?
I agree with all the comments that have been made so far. I just wanted to, I was hoping we could maybe just clarify a little bit, because we've talked a lot about, so we have the schoolwork planning teams, we have the sit teams, which is school instructional team, correct? And then, of course, we have the school climate teams. And I know from the next steps that there is, one of the next steps is figuring out how they coordinate. I guess I would just, you know, we've talked a lot about up here and in some of the meetings that we've been having with administration and union leadership around the number of committees and teams that are school-based and district-based. So maybe thinking as we plan ahead, like, this work all sounds really exciting and great, but how do we, how can we better integrate them so we're not just adding yet another committee?
Can I clarify? When we talk about schoolwork planning team, we're talking about our little working group. There's just a sit team at the school.
There's a sit team at the school, the school improvement, or school instructional team, excuse me.
And the product that they turn in is a schoolwork plan.
Oh, okay. I appreciate that clarification. I thought there was another school-based.
No, so the sit team creates their annual work plan. And when we talk about schoolwork planning team, that's just the working group to develop that process.
I'm glad I asked for that clarification, I appreciate that.
One fewer team than you thought.
That is definitely good news. And then, I don't, if you answered this, I apologize, but I think Rebecca asked the question, how are, how does a parent access the work plan?
Right now, that's not something that I've specified to principals. I think that's up to principals, whether they feel their plan is, they want to put it out there, whether they want to take advantage of the summary template and create one of those for school communities. And believe, I don't know if you've given any specific guidance on that, or if it's really up to the principals?
Traditionally, there has not been a specific directive on that. However, I know that this year, because of the increase, I would argue that I'm seeing communiqués from different school leaders to their community about some of the strategies that have been articulated. So whether it's in the form that the schoolwork plan is specifically developed so that they internally have a working document, so it's not a polished piece of paper that here is our schoolwork plan, that, you know, it's really a working document that many of them have developed. So it's not something, but there are, for example, some schools have one pagers that they then shared with their community, right? Or they, I know that one principal took all the key points, the strategies involved, and made that as part of their New Year, sharing with their community. So they sent a whole, basically took the schoolwork plan, put it in a letter to all parents, community stakeholders, they're doing a share out on it. So there are lots of different ways. I know that earlier in the year, a school invited the schoolwork plan to help them develop some slides, do a PowerPoint presentation at a parent community engagement event so that they could share the results of the schoolwork planning process. And so it's expressed in different ways based on the school. I don't, I would not object to really, I think, thinking about that more particularly about how we can develop some coherence across the system to make sure that everybody's a part of that. Because if we are going to move towards higher achievement for students, we've got to make sure that parents are really at the center of that work as well. at the center of that work as well.
And I, you know, my colleagues have already, I think, stressed, and I agree with the importance of making sure that we find some way to get family and student voice. And I'm, I'm glad to hear that some of the schools are starting, and hopefully, all the schools will eventually, um, elementary schools will start doing the student portion of Five Essentials. But I think it's important to think about the limitations of the Five Essentials. So for example, I know even though parents do fill out the Five Essentials, that's not actually reported out. So some of the family engagement information that we get from the Five Essentials, and correct me if I'm wrong, but that doesn't actually come from the parent responses, correct?
The parent responses don't factor into one of the actual essentials, but they're reported in the supplemental measures.
Yeah, they're not, they're not reported publicly, the parent survey results. However, the school teams have access to both-
They have, okay.
...measures about parent engagement from the teacher perspective, as well as-
That's also the parent.
...a host of information reported from the parent perspective.
Okay. And also, when we talk about getting the, the student survey at the elementary level, is that, is it just fourth and fifth? Is it, what grade levels?
This is the first year that elementary schools have had an opportunity to participate. And for those who are piloting, essentially what the survey purveyors have done is to use the middle school items and apply them for fourth and fifth grade.
Okay.
The content of the questions really isn't at a, at a reading level that students younger than fourth grade could make sense of.
Okay. Okay. So I think the Five Essentials is a great starting point, but I think there still needs to be other avenues of getting a parent and student voice. So I would just encourage us to continue to think about how that will factor in. And then also, in terms of the equity lens and the Equity Impact Assessment Tool, and I know that we've had some back and forth about how much to formalize it and, and require it at decision-making. And I understand the, the tension between trying to create, you know, a framework that everyone has to use versus giving some flexibility and options. But as we are all, as a district, working on having the same language and having the same training and, and really kind of exercising this equity muscle, I think is, is how Anya once described it. You know, having a formalized tool that everybody is essentially required to use might not necessarily be such a bad starting point. So that everyone is asking that, e- even if the, the results, the, the answers to the questions and the results and where people choose to focus is different, if at least everyone is asking the same questions, and we know that we're all applying the same equity lens, I think there can be a value in that. So just another thing to encourage, thinking about how, because it sounded like the Equity Impact Assessment is a tool that's given but not necessarily required to be used. So just another thought as, as we're working forward on this. Are there any other questions or comments?
Just one more comment, as I was thinking about the instructional teams, is just kind of thinking about, usually there's always the people who jump up and volunteer for, you know, for these type of things, or who have been doing this for a long time, and just ensuring that there's, that they, that we're incorporating even in, like, a mentorship type of thing in these teams, that there, that it's not always the same people that are part of these teams, and that we're encouraging different voices at schools as part of these teams. And I don't really know how, how the, the teams are designed, but it's, it's definitely one thing that I know can, can, can happen, right? There's always the, the individuals that are quick to volunteer and have been at a school for a very long time. And while, yes, they know historically a lot about this school, I think it's important to, to welcome new voices, to encourage teachers that are, you know, possibly new to the district to also share their feedback. And again, just to reiterate on the importance of parental involvement in this plan, the parents are the ones that are going to help the school teams push these plans forward. Yes, a lot of it is done during instructional time, but I think parents are your best advocates. And, you know, you go to different schools, and one of the things Mr. Calgari reminded me of is when I was at Dewey, I don't know if this was part of the plan, but the, the mission statement that we developed as a school, I can tell you that it completely changed our experience at school, and I think it really brought everybody together. And it was, it was, it was a different environment in a matter of, of two years, just by simply stating what, as parents, we were sending our kids to school to accomplish, and what the school was going to do in return in, for our cooperation. So I just think it's a, it's a really essential piece. And, you know, as we've heard, community comments, you know, sometimes when they come and parents just feel like they're not informed, it's a really key piece to not only instill pride in the work that our educators are doing with our children, but community, just, community is so important in ensuring that, that this process is shared with, with parents and family members.
Sorry, guys. I have one, one, it's pretty quick. What's next? Do we, do aggregate the work plans with all of the goals at the individual school level and roll them up and then report on that, and the performance and the results that are achieved? I think that our first step is to work with the schools to build a process for them to reflect on their achievement of the goals before we put a report out there saying that these were their goals and did they make them or not, in terms of keeping with the philosophy of how we approach this work. I think that that's something down the road to think of, but I think right now, the focus of this work is building school capacity to engage in that reflection, to tap the voices of their educators, to have the insights on where did our focus shift, where did we, you know, apply the right pressure to the levers we identified, where didn't we, how does it inform our reflection on our goals? Right now, that's my primary focus, is to give them the chance to build the ability as a team to do that.
I think also, this part of the process is really about support, and there are other mechanisms in place in the system in regard to accountability. So we have our, we have our overall goals as a district that we, as a leadership team at the district, are tracking. And when things aren't trending in the right direction there, that helps us see what needs to change. And, and Annelie's particular role on the team may be to figure out in cases where particular schools may need something. There's also accountability in terms of public reporting, both through the report card and the reports that we put out.
But this is better, I think, from an actually, to see what's actually happening at our schools, how our students are actually performing. I think, and especially with our focus on equity and the leading indicators that will feed into the report that you're going to present on next, it just seems like such a great start and a great opportunity to be able to have a much better finger on the pulse of what's actually happening in our schools than looking at the report that we're about to look at. And so, for me, I think it'd be really interesting to be able to see this grow into something that's more of a measurement tool for our entire district, not just a, not just, but not only a school work plan.
But you're asking, this is data as a flashlight, not as a hammer. And you're asking for something on the assumption of success. And while I also want to assume that all of these plans are going to result in success, I would love, we heard a lot about autonomy, and that means that the practitioners need to have the freedom to be vulnerable to fail and not be accountable to a report that says that. They need the freedom to be creative, to think about at the grassroots level what works in their buildings and be wrong. And I feel like a report would hinder that autonomy, or that creativity, maybe. And you might know that, I mean, I don't know what the pulse would be in the room, but- I guess I would just reflect on it. Annelie, you mentioned No Child Left Behind. So I've worked in accountability, both in large school districts and at the state level. And I think accountability has a very, it's enticing, right? Because we, we know we want these outcomes for our students, and so we want someone to be accountable for achieving them. But from a perspective of the culture that that creates within the education system, it often is very counterintuitive in terms of we ramp up the accountability, and then we decrease the effectiveness and the, of, of the staff, because folks are, are, are not given the latitude they need in order to really pursue solutions and to take risks. And so I think, having observed that frequently, both in large systems and across the state, that would be my concern about changing the philosophy behind the way that this tool's been developed.
So I'll just chime in, because I've experienced both, right? The curiosity of being outside of the system and wanting to have more data or more authentic data, or more holistic data. But also, having worked in education and worked in, worked with children, felt the, the level, the cortisol level that increases when it, when the implication is that you're under a microscope, as opposed to operating in good faith and with all that you have, with the best intentions, and, or, or operating in performance for folks as opposed to in partnership with folks. And so I think it's just an interesting question to continue to pose in terms of, you know, how are these one-pagers available, or what information is available that allows people to be more engaged and more informed? And also, the more informed people are the best, the better they can contribute, right, to the conversation about what is working or, or not working. The more trusting those relationships become, the more folks may share their home experience with the school as well. And so what is that balance between making this a, a compliance tool that folks then feel like they have to perform for, or are experienced, experiencing extreme stress around, and then may not feel like they can be completely authentic and honest with, right? And also, being this tool of partnership. And I think that some of that is the spirit of which we decide to reflect on that. Is this a tool of accountability in order to prove to people that we have high standards, or that we're accomplishing, or, or making progress towards high standards? Or do we think of it, the information that we choose to share as information that builds partnership and collaboration and knowledge as a community in order to be better, better stakeholders to one another in moving children forward in the direction that we hope that they'll go? And I don't think that there's, like, a clear answer, but I think that there certainly is, at least for me personally, I do have that curiosity between, like, how can, as a parent, how can I learn more about our schools, but also not wanting that information to, to be misused or end up being a barrier to actual progress? So that, those are my particular thoughts around that. To you all, I guess to you two, Lindsay.
I mean, I certainly appreciate everyone who has significantly more education experience than I do, contributing to this conversation. So I appreciate that. I, I think really what I'm trying to get at is that I feel like we're all trying to move forward on our, on equity, right? We are all trying to achieve more equitable outcomes for students in our district. And I feel like with all of the work that's being done at the school level, we don't get a really great report on all of that. And it sounds like everyone's already come up with the same goals, marching towards a more equitable outcomes for our students. And it seems like a missed opportunity to not be sharing that in a rolled-up manner, similar to the way you did just a few bullet points on, in the deck. I don't, I'm not trying to say that this should be the new tool that we use for holding our, our schools accountable. I'm suggesting, suggesting that there is so much work that's happening at the schools, it seems like a great opportunity for us to be able to roll it up in more of these bullet points, showing all of the initiatives that are in common with the different schools that they're all undertaking. We don't necessarily need to before, report holistically, or, sorry, report in aggregate on the outcomes or the progress that's been achieved, if that is something that is going to minimize performance. But I think it would be a great opportunity for us to see what's going on.
I totally want to celebrate the good stuff. I just want to make sure that we're separating board work from educator work, and not muddy that line. That's, that was my response. I just want to make sure that, like, the educators are doing these things, like, in, in their space, without the fear of, like, some kind of accountability or reporting mechanism that would hinder their risk-taking capabilities.
I, I wonder if this bleeds over into some of the conversation we're going to have next week about the crosswalk between our, the equity goals and the strategic plan. Because ultimately, whatever, whatever concludes from that discussion in terms of what's presented and in terms of what our feedback is, that should, that will translate into those quarterly updates that we get. Still not at the school level, which I think is this deeper dive that, I, I can't speak for Lindsay, but it, it sounds like it's not necessarily going to get towards the school level, or unless I'm remembering, misremembering the quarterly reports. But it does get towards the-
Yeah, it doesn't get to the school level.
...the larger district conversation about the equity goals that we have, and then reporting out quarterly in terms of the progress towards that.
And I guess I, I wouldn't want, like, data to take over such an exciting, you know, like, exciting report, right? Like, I think that this is an opportunity to really showcase the things that we're doing well at each individual school, and that people are excited to show this information. So I definitely wouldn't want us to take anything away from the excitement of these reports and, like, add, you know, add numbers to it. Yeah, so I, yeah.
And part of, part of the excitement is that this is a continuous improvement process that actually honors the principals who are sitting in the room, and the principals across the district, where they can actually build a learning opportunity for their staffs and for themselves. And we want to, we want to highlight that, and, and they're empowered. I mean, that's the, that, that's our goal, is to empower our principals to do the leading that we want them to lead. And they're within a context. The larger context is a lot of what we'll talk about next in terms of the Achievement and Accountability Report. We know that we have to make improvements, we know we have to be urgent, but we also have to have educators and leaders who feel as though they have the ability and the flexibility to make some decisions at their local unit called school with our support and our, our help.
Yeah, I don't want to put words into Lindsay's mouth, but I didn't necessarily hear that that was what she was, was asking for. But I, I think there is some, you know, appreciating Anya's description, sort of the tension between, you know, how do we be transparent about this work that's being done? Because I would venture to say that most parents don't know that this work is necessarily going on at the school level, or the depths of, of, of how it's going on, but they would be interested in knowing. So how can we get some of that information out, not necessarily at the level of a board report, but somehow, you know, whether it is through these one-pagers or whatever, I think there needs to be some sort of communication of, of the work plans that are developed. So as Rebecca said, parents can be a more fruitful partner in, in the work of educating their children.
To Paul's point, I think we have to trust the principals in managing the politics of their buildings and doing that.
Absolutely. No, I think that's right.
And again, what the, all of the evening's presentation is, this is a, a long and steady process to really focus, and it takes some time, and we're taking the time. We're being intentional about that. And so we want to be careful as we progress. I, I actually think this is unprecedented work. I mean, I think the, again, in most school districts, it's a compliance activity, it's a checklist activity, the principals do it as part of their job, and then they go about doing the rest of their business. And so, again, to have our three colleagues tonight talk about root causes and how deep they've been diving and trying to figure out what that really means in terms of continuous improvement at their site is, is so important for progress in the district. You know, as professionals, people want to be challenged, and then want to have voice and be empowered in their voice. And that's what these tools are allowing them to be.
Yeah, again, I, I, and I want to, I want to kind of reiterate and elevate what you just said. I think, for me, it's, it's, you know, when districts take on equity training, and what I've read is, is, again, a lot of it is just, it starts at the training, right? How is this training going to manifest itself in our buildings? How, how are, so, so again, I, I see this as, as, as providing a framework for, for the, the racial inequity lens that, that folks have been trained on to manifest itself in, in practice within the community, within the school community, with, with educational colleagues to, to, again, manifest itself in, 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 into how we serve our kids, specifically in each building. So, so I'm interested, again, I'm, I'm excited to see how that's going to pan out. And, I mean, I think it's, it's, again, like Joey said, you know, we got to give our educators a freedom to, to be able to express themselves and take chances and to fail and to try, but, but do whatever it takes, because, again, we know, and as we're going to see in our, in, in the next segment, you know, we, we have a lot of work to do. We really do.
Absolutely. So I just wanted to say thank you. Thank you for bringing the discussion. And I, it is a discussion, so hopefully, everything that was shared tonight is received in that vein, as opposed to a directive, but really honest sharing of reflections. And, and so, thank you for the work that you all have done, and for everyone-
Yes, thank you to the principals.
...who worked on the pilot, in order to contribute to your colleagues, but also to the district. And I really, I, I appreciate this kind of conversation and-
And hopefully, this was also helpful to you all's process.
Thank you, thank you very much. So with that, we will conclude our discussion on schoolwork plan process and move on to the Achievement and Accountability Report.
So let me start as Peter boots up some information. What we are about to present in the 2017 Achievement and Accountability Report are data that in almost all of the data we've seen before. And it's, again, our commitment to being transparent about data and information, accountability data and information that we share with you, the board, with fellow educators and across the community. So we will remain transparent on the data that we have and as it drives the work that we do. A lot of the information in here is sobering. We've heard that from the community commentators and, and we've said that in the past. And we, we recognize that where we need to go is to make improvements and make improvements across multiple levels. And we are working on that. We're working on that through our literacy programming that we've been doing. We're working on that in terms of our analysis and the next steps for early childhood. We're working on that, and we will come forward on staffing considerations as it relates to African-American students. And as we, the last conversation, in the goal setting. The goal setting that goes on at the school level becomes a larger part of how do we drive change? And the goal setting that our individuals, individual teachers and all of us around the system have in terms of driving change to actually address the, many of the issues that are in here. Again, these are not new data. They are sobering data. They are not new data. We've presented them in the past, and we annually put them together in a report that Peter will give some highlights on, and then we'll have a discussion.
Great. So let me start maybe by just situating this report in the context of other information you've received and clarifying, from my point of view at least, what the purpose of the report is. As you know, we had a conversation back in August having to do with outcomes on primarily the MAP assessment when we looked at the Strategic Plan Scorecard. That's an innovation that we made when we adopt the, adopted the Strategic Plan to really begin reporting our results in August in the context of a reflection that had gone on over the summer. And so all of the MAP data that we'll look at tonight is data that we have presented and that you've discussed back in August. You'll also see in this report data on the DRA assessment that's given for students in kindergarten through second grade. This is data that we released back in, I believe it was September. And as we'll, as we'll look tonight, we begin to see some early positive signs of some of the work that Stacy's team is undertaking in this regard. There's also data in here on the, the ISEL assessment given in kindergarten and that we've used to create a proxy of kindergarten readiness in terms of literacy skills. The data in here is, is new tonight for the most recent year. The other data has been previously presented to the board in past years. And then there's also data in here about our state assessments, which was included as an FYI item earlier on in the calendar year. So with that in mind, there really isn't a lot of new data here. And so the question then becomes, so why are we sitting here talking about this report? From my point of view, this report is really to synthesize all of the data that we've looked at, to put it together in one place, to make sure that the progress we made in transparency when we wrote the Black Student Achievement Report and the Latino Student Achievement Report continues in disaggregating all of these data for racial and ethnic subgroups. And to make sure that we continue to have one place where folks can look to understand the performance of students across our district. We recognize that this is a report that's been produced in the district for more than a decade and that a lot of the data tools that we put out now were not in existence when the report was created. And so we have tried to, to streamline it and, and to just include the essential elements. And so as we go forward, I also welcome the board to guide in terms of whether the information that's provided is of use or whether things need to continue to evolve in terms of our reporting. So tonight, I just want to cover a few highlights of these data and then glad to answer any questions as you have discussion. But I want to begin with looking at data through an equity lens. This is sort of a standard part that we try to include in all the reports that my department produces. And as you can see from the written report from tonight, it feels like the further we get into our study of racial equity, the more we want to include to really ground our looking at data in a racial equity lens. So a couple of things that I'll just read out to highlight are first, that data in education has historically been used to perpetuate inequality and to justify outcomes that should be unacceptable in a system committed to equity. And this reality is present even as District 65 seeks to use data to inform equitable decision-making. Another thing that I would just highlight is that when we look at aggregate data and they show that members of a particular demographic group score below benchmarks, these outcome reflect opportunity gaps. These results should not be used to draw conclusions about the efforts or abilities of these students. In other words, it's systemic barriers to achievement and not the abilities or the achievement individual students that's really the object of study here. So with that in mind and referring you to the additional information that is available in the report, let me move us forward just a little bit to some of the highlights of the report. First, I just want to note that equity remains an urgent priority. That would be my headline from this report. We are looking at multiple assessments. We're looking at multiple grade levels. We're looking at multiple content areas. And throughout all of that data, what we see is that students of color have lower assessment scores on all of those different measures as compared to district averages and as compared to white students. We also see similar gaps throughout the report for low-income students as, as compared to high-income students and also for students with IEPs or Individualized Education Plans compared to those who do not. And so it's important to just keep this front of mind as we have throughout our work in District 65 and in our strategic planning and our action, that this, this is a persistent problem across all of the different data that we're gonna look at. The second headline that I would want to highlight is that we do see increased equity in early elementary outcomes. Here, we're looking at the Diagnostic Reading Assessment, DRA. And what, as I've just highlighted, there is still racial and socioeconomic predictability. However, we did see that the scores of Black and Hispanic or Latinx students have trended upward in the past few years. More students are reaching DRA benchmarks in the spring, meaning that they have a higher degree of skill that is on grade level in terms of reading comprehension. The second piece of data, or the third piece of data I'd like to highlight is in regard to our entering kindergarteners. This chart looks at three different statistics from our ISEL assessment. I would begin by looking at the red line. This is what we're calling kindergarten-ready literacy skills. And basically, what it means is the student is achieving state-level proficiency at the 50th percentile or higher on four or more of five early literacy tests that are given. So these are things like one-to-one matching, identifying letters, skills that students bring to school that help them build their literacy skills quickly. And what we saw in the most recent year is that while more than 50% of our students continue to come to, to kindergarten with this level of proficiency, we do see a decrease compared to the previous year. And it is the second lowest year that we've seen over the last five. We see a similar pattern when we look at students who have a specific area of need. These are students who are scoring below the 25th percentile across the state on any one skill, indicating that with more observation, they may need some additional support from the teacher. And we saw an increase last year from 25% of students having a specific area of need to nearly 30% of students having a specific area of need among our incoming kindergarteners. So then, turning back to upper elementary and middle school grades, we have on this chart data from the PARK assessment. I mentioned when I presented these data last year that there was a big change in the assessment between 2015 and 2016. And that while the state was reporting these two data points next to each other, when we looked at the details of the state-level data reporting, we definitely had some concerns and questions about how comparable the 2015 and 2016 data really are to one another. So with that in mind, I would recommend primarily looking at the difference between 2016 and 2017. And there we see that between 2016 and 2017, we had pretty much the same level of performance in English Language Arts or Literacy in the two years and a decrease of approximately six percentage points between 2016 and 2017 in terms of benchmark proficiency in math. And then, at this point, reviewing some MAP outcomes for the same grade levels that, that should be familiar from our discussion back in August. College readiness benchmark attainment increased slightly in math from 56.3 to 56.6%, so pretty much flat there, and trended downward in reading from 62% down to 60.5%. Looking at some other important MAP outcomes, the chart here shows you the percent of students who made expected gains. In math, there was a decrease from approximately 52% down to approximately 48% in terms of the percent of students who made expected gains. And then in reading, there was a decrease from approximately 43% to approximately 36% in terms of students making expected gains. You might recall from the report that I made earlier in the year that we looked at that in terms of the average percentile of students. And we came off of a year in 2016 where the average percentile score in terms of growth for students was in the 80s and 90s for most grade levels. In this most recent year, the average percentile in terms of growth was in between 30 and 50th percentile for most grade levels, meaning that we, we slipped from 2016 where our growth was well, well above national averages to 2017 where growth, depending on the grade level, was a little bit to a medium amount below the, the national average for growth. Then looking at students who are scoring in the bottom quartile, you can see that there was an increase in both math and reading for this most recent year in terms of the percentage of students whose spring MAP scores were at or below the 25th percentile. And then the last thing I'd like to highlight is just where District 65 performance is relative to state and national averages. When we look at PARK performance, the state, our district continues to exceed statewide averages in both reading and math on the whole. And then in terms of the MAP performance, our district is consistently above the 50th percentile nationwide. So again, really reinforcing the patterns that are already familiar from last report, from last year. And, and highlighting, again, as we look through all of these, I think our racial equity slide at the beginning really highlights our, our most important area of, of need. So with that, I'll turn it over to you for discussion, and I'm glad to answer any questions. Can you go back like two slides?
There you go. So you're saying that from 2016, 2017 that we trended downward?
Mm-hmm.
When I look at page 20 of the report that you gave us, that has tables on it, just the map, the MAP scores, the percentile rankings, there's 2016 and 2017 right next to each other with math and with reading? And I guess I'm curious if, if I longitudinally match grade three 2016 with grade four 2017, I see that the 2017 third-grade cohort is in the 71st percentile ranking, which replaces the 84th percentile ranking of last year's third-grade cohort, and we lose the eighth-grade cohort of 93rd percentile. Could that be the, the downward trend? That it's not that students are performing more poorly, but that we have a different cohort that's come in and we've lost a different cohort? Just statistically? Like, is it, is it, is that enough of a difference? That that could be the downward trend? That it's not so much the scores have changed, but that the people have changed?
So if you take a look at that page 20 that you pointed to, there are two tables there. Table 11 looks at the percentile rank in terms of the absolute score.
And then the growth one.
And then the growth one. So when you look at the growth one, for example, in reading, if you look at the, the fourth-grade cohort in 2016 was at the 78th percentile for growth, that same cohort in 2017 was at the 33rd percentile on the same subject. And that's a pretty consistent trend across grade levels. So essentially, what we're seeing is across grade levels and subjects, a smaller average growth percentile for students across subjects and grades.
Thank you for that.
Does that make sense?
Yes. As I was just looking at the math table, that doesn't have the same difference.
Can I ask some questions? So I have a couple, number of questions because a lot of this data, to me, is in some ways contradictory. So when I think of the ISEL data versus the DRA data, you know, I went back to the September report. We had an FYI on the DRA data. And, and I remember because we were talking about the MAP data at that time and all of that data is sobering, right? But the DRA data had said, and, and this, I think, to Cicely's points earlier, you know, when we're looking at kindergarten readiness or where people, where children are starting, at kindergarten, in, just specifically with our Black student cohort, we had gone from 64% DRA meeting standards by spring to 76%, which is a pretty significant jump relative to the five-year average. And yet, the ISEL data is kind of showing a trending downward. So help me understand how to take those two things together?
Yeah. So one thing to keep in mind is that the ISEL data in this report is one year fresher than everything else. Because we're looking at the, the fall test scores for ISEL for the incoming class. So where we're seeing that downtick in terms of ISEL scores are the kindergarteners who are in our schools right now. And they're not reflected yet in the DRA data that you're seeing. So the DRA data that you see is for the kindergarteners who completed kindergarten last year. And then Stacy, maybe, I don't know if you want to say more, but...
You know, I was gonna say, the primary difference is, so one, we have different assessments and timing of assessment. The ISEL assessment is given within a month of students arriving in District 65, and it's really focused on kind of entry-level early literacy skills. And then we pick up with the DRA assessment in December and again in May. And so essentially, our goal is to take kids as they arrive with their, with whatever skills, with the skills that they present, ISEL, social, emotional, all other, and to get them accelerated into the early literacy process. And so kids arrive where they arrive. It's our job in order to really meet their needs and measure their growth later in the year with the DRA assessment.
So the DRA is effectively assessing what we do over the course of the year, where the ISEL is a starting point, correct?
Correct.
So we're looking at a starting point that is, for one year at least, is going down, although we had been seeing upward trends in the starting point before. And the DRA, the other piece of that, I think, that I found interesting is that, not surprising, but, you know, the DRA growth in kindergarten is so huge. And then that, that, that percentage growth or, it tends to get smaller and smaller by third grade relative, again, with the September data. So it's relative to the five-year average, the difference, I guess, of improvement overall, so.
The, so kindergarten is, so I think the year of greatest reading and literacy transformation for our students is in first grade. And there is an incredible amount of reading growth that we work to achieve and look for in that year. So what we do see is slightly higher percentage of kids meeting the end of kindergarten benchmark. We, you know, some of the red work has said we see a little bit of a decline going in through first grade, and then we pick it back up in second and third. And so the numbers come out fairly steady, but there is a dip in that first-grade year. And that is where we really do try to pay attention to reading intervention as well.
So, I mean, that's a, one of the things, and not necessarily in the summary level, but... but to the point about JEH, what we don't see here is, you know, what does that data look like differently for ISEL, for kids coming from JEH, versus every other program particularly? Again, kind of going back to the planning piece for those pieces that we have some linear, not control, but we have the ability to impact even more effectively, as well as that which we do with the community at large and cradle to career. So it would be, I think it would be great, you know, going forward to kind of be able to be able to look at that. And that, just to, A, to see if, how those children are doing relative to other children, and disaggregate it by race, et cetera. And I don't know what the metric, like, I don't know what the, because at least you can show, these children came from JEH, and this is where they are in ISEL, and this is how their growth trajectory looks in DRA or whatever other metrics, and is that similar or different to other preparation? So that was one thing. And I think the other piece, I just, it was very helpful to have, so, again, we're looking at, you know, we had some very strong upward movements in meeting expected growth over the last three, two or three years. And clearly, this downward trend has precipitated based on that dropping back again. So, and what I tried to do is, like, it just seems like there's great variability when you look down, when you break it out by school by school, you know, there still are some schools, I mean, I'm sorry, Mr. Williams isn't here anymore, but, you know, in Oakton, where they went from 21% to 29% of Black students being ELA at the PARC benchmark in one year. So there's some really good successes, and then there's some that aren't doing well. And so I guess all of this goes back to those, you know, that root cause piece, which is, you can't tell here, we can't talk about that, but it's, maybe on, I would want you to speak, Peter, to, like, what do you see underneath the data in terms of the trend, downward trend? Is it consistently downward across schools and grades, or are there pockets that, especially at grade level, that were more stark in terms of growth? Because math is very scary, the drop in math was very scary to me. I mean, it's all troubling, but that was a particularly scary thing. So what insights might you have about that?
So I guess, my mind isn't going in a couple places, so let me talk a little bit about multiple assessments. Let me talk a little bit about sample size at schools, and then the variability in outcomes across schools. So in terms of multiple assessments, I think I am thankful with the effort that we put into PARC to now have two years of data that are comparable, because when both MAP and PARC move in the same direction, and particularly as we go forward, when MAP and PARC move in the same direction over multiple years, it gives us more of a sense of, like, is this noise or is this signal? And so, given that we have one year of data now where math outcomes on PARC were downward, the ELA was flat, and then on the MAP, college readiness benchmarks, we have trends we can compare. I think looking at those two assessments together is really helpful to us. More specifically to your question, though, about which, you know, is this variable, is this led by particular schools? As I look at the data, I think a couple of things. One is, I think, the decrease in the amount of growth is pretty consistent across a lot of schools, which would suggest some district-wide effects, if that's a trend that we would see particularly for an additional year. So part of what we looked at when we were looking at these data are, like, are there just a couple of schools that are really driving this trend, or do we see some district-wide effect? And especially in the case of growth, and especially in the case of kids in the bottom quartile, that seemed like more of a district-wide trend. That having been said, I think the third thing I would point out is just, particularly when we're thinking about elementary schools, we're typically talking about four sections per grade level, sometimes three, typically have 20 to 25 students per class. So we're talking about 80 to 100 students per grade level, per building. And so when we begin to disaggregate the data, particularly for one year, our sample size starts to get small, and so it gets kind of hard to draw conclusions. So I've sat with principals through the SWP process, trying to make sense of some of these data by grade level or by different subgroups, and a lot of times, it's really hard to draw meaningful conclusions at a granular level from the data at a school level, which has just led me to have extra caution and sort of, kind of highlighting from the data, hey, these are the three schools that we really need to potentially work with, because oftentimes, the sample size, which students graduated from fifth grade and which ones are coming into third grade, and those types of things also have an effect on what's happening at the individual school level. So, a high level, I think, particularly when it comes to growth, and particularly when it comes to 25th percentile, we're seeing some pretty consistent patterns across schools in a downward direction. And in terms of taking away meaning for individual schools, I think the sample size makes some of those conclusions a little bit nuanced, and that's why the school team making sense of the data is a big part of how we do the analysis.
Thanks.
You know, there's some data I'd like to see included in the next report, and I would love to see some of the data around early childhood, right? So I know our particular program does Teaching Strategies Gold, and they use 30 objectives to measure child development, to measure language development, and it's very comprehensive. And I think, you know, the talk, of course, in education is how do we get a more complete picture of a child as opposed to just what we've been used to, is just the math and reading, right? And I think, you know, I would love to see and compare how our kiddos are doing in JEH and in other early childhood programs that feed into our schools in Teaching Strategies Gold, which I think is a very common curriculum as well as an assessment tool that's used. And then that way, we can really get that piece of the pie or picture, because what I'm seeing here is just kind of K-12, and it's not a complete picture for me. Have you been in a task force last meeting? I'll ask you, Joyce, if you remember, but I think some of our directors presented some of the Teaching Strategies Gold, and how are our kiddos doing in Teaching Strategies Gold?
So I can speak to that if it's helpful. So I think one of the reasons we haven't included Teaching Strategies Gold here is that we don't have data sharing agreements in place with other early childhood programs. So while we can track the performance of our own JEH students, we don't have a baseline for comparison to the students in other programs. And our historical analysis of the ISEL data shows that our students in the JEH program tend to perform lower on those ISEL outcomes than students coming from other programs, with the caveat that when we break the data down based on race and income, that we actually, in some cases, see higher performance of our students compared to students coming in from other programs who have the same racial identity and the same income status. So for example, Black students, when we did the analysis, Black students coming from a lower-income household who attended JEH program have a higher proficiency rate on the ISEL examination than, or on the ISEL assessment than on students coming from other programs who are both Black and coming from a low-income background. So there is some evidence based on that, that if we were able to gather TS Gold data across programs, that we might see positive outcomes controlling for race and income for students coming from the other programs across these other skills, recognizing that while our JEH students may be doing better than other students from the same racial background and economic subgroup, it doesn't take away the fact that that is a level that is far too low and that needs to be improved. In terms of how we're actually doing on Teaching Strategies Gold, we've done an analysis of last year's data and the year before data, and what we looked at was breaking students down into three different groups based on each of the skills, one sort of being an advanced proficiency level, a basic proficiency level, and a below proficiency level. And what we see across ages, the three- and four-year-olds who participate in the assessment and across the programs that participate, is a very strong growth from the beginning of the year to the end of the year on most of these different skills. And that for the students who are enrolled in the program at age three and at age four, even more growth than the students who are mobile and coming to the program and leaving the program and coming back.
So then you're saying, so again, the kiddos are doing really well, depending on what time they get signed up for early childhood. So then, for me, then what happens between them doing really well on all these 30 outcomes that measure social, emotional development, that measure language development, measure math, and then we get to DRA and then ISEL? So that's kind of where, I'd like to see that piece, and I don't know if you could talk a little bit about that?
Yeah, so we've examined that too, and I think, I think that many students, so, Teaching Strategies Gold, as you know, covers a broad range of skills, right? Literacy being one of them. And for incoming kindergarten students, we only have a literacy measure to compare. So students could do great on the other domains, and it wouldn't, we wouldn't have no expectation that it would necessarily be reflected on their literacy assessment, other than if there was correlation that when you're good at math and you're good at cooperation, that you might also be good at literacy. So that's part of it. But then even when we do an apples-to-apples comparison of the proficiency benchmark established for four-year-olds on TS Gold, and then demonstrating our benchmark on the ISEL test, there's some lack of alignment there. And what we see in our data is that our ISEL benchmark, which we set because it's predictive of later success, so the students who meet the ISEL benchmark are very likely to meet the DRA benchmark as they move through District 65. There's not a research basis behind that benchmark on ISEL in the way that there is in the literature behind Teaching Strategies Gold. Is there anything else?
The Teaching Strategies Gold is normed, so you could do a comparison to JEH, to the norm group, based on the research that's backing the tool, and compare that to the gap between DRA and MAP and those norm groups. It might be a stretch, but, I mean, it might be worth exploration, too.
Potentially. I mean, because ISEL is a state-developed tool, it's a very, it's potentially a very different norm sample.
Yeah.
But it's something that we could explore.
But MAP and Teaching Strategies are both nationally normed.
They are. Yeah.
Those comparisons there.
I was also going to ask you about, so I know that the district had been piloting doing MAP math with our English learners in Spanish, and I'm wondering if we've continued that? If MAP math is, in Spanish, is being offered to our TWE students, our English learner students who...
We have, and we've expanded now, so that I think third, fourth, and fifth grade, so all three, are using the MAP in Spanish, largely based on some of the initial data we looked at that showed that students were much better able to demonstrate their proficiency in that way.
Yeah. Now, does that hold true? I mean, again, so, again, I know, we piloted, and I remember seeing that data, which was really promising. Again, they showed that, again, when you're utilizing the language, that kids are strong with it, and of course, they're going to do well, particularly in math. Is that, so, in the latest administration of MAP, are we still seeing that trend?
I haven't, because we were able to sort of draw that conclusion and make the decision that we should move forward, I haven't looked at that again.
Okay. All right. So, I mean, my humble request is if we could include that as part of our data reporting around achievement. And I had a couple of other questions here. And, you know, student performance for our kids who have IEPs is pretty dismal. Is there a way we can break that down by race? Can we disaggregate by race? Kids with IEPs, and then see how that breaks out?
Certainly we could.
All right. All right. Because I really think that might be something to kind of further explore. I know one of the things that I learned out of, you know, going to the Detroit Courageous Conversations is that, again, I think that's a place where I think school districts kind of neglect, really look at it, and there is a real racial disparity in regards to performance with kids who have IEPs. And of course, kids with IEPs happen to disproportionately be, many times, children of color. So I think that would be beneficial for us to explore a little bit further and dig into that. And then, I don't know, we should, I want to talk about, so what do we do about this, right? I mean, I know there's been suggestions by the community about how we approach, what strategies we approach. And I know there's some incredible work that we talked about earlier today, where we're, but again, I think there's still, you know, still a lot of work to do in regard to how we're staffing our programs, having specific knowledge and leadership around teaching Black students particularly. And, you know, again, as a board, I think we should definitely consider looking at having a Black Student Achievement Director as part of that strategy to really, really kind of help us nail down. And it's something that I think is necessary, because it would demonstrate that it is, it's a commitment that we make as a district, again, similar to having our director for English Learner Services. But again, it shouldn't be something that, again, is done in isolation, right? And I think one of the fears is that, again, okay, if we put a Black Student Director, or Black Student Achievement, then that's going to get siloed and ghettoized. And I think, I don't think this board would let that happen. I don't think this administration would let that happen. So something that, again, we should consider. I know Laura Dell is looking into how the current work that we're doing around equity is panning out, and whether we would, you know, whether that would be an option or viable option for what we do.
I'm going to come forward with a recommendation at our next board meeting.
Okay.
And I think you're spot on, and we want to be really careful about siloing. I think we also want to pay attention to how we help to influence what teachers do in classrooms, what principals do in the buildings, and then how do we drive that in a way that doesn't load so much on one person, but creates, we've been talking about this as a team, sort of a web of responsibilities with a point person. And we'll come back next week.
Right.
With a first foray into that, there's a lot of work to do to be able to design what that really means moving forward, and we have to resource it as well.
Absolutely. And I want to go back to, again, what we were talking about earlier tonight, is, again, I think that framework that principals have, and that organic approach to attacking, you know, some of these equity and academic achievement gaps is, will facilitate, you know, some of that work between the administration, our equity team, and that possible, you know, Director of Black Student Achievement. I mean, so those pieces, I think, are in place. It's just, we got to make it happen.
I appreciate your comments, and the one thing I didn't say at the beginning that I wish I had is to situate what we're talking about tonight, not only in terms of the data reporting that we've done, but also in terms of how does this relate to what we're doing? I intentionally left that out of this report, because we've been spending a lot of time and effort in preparing a reflection on the midpoint of the strategic plan implementation. And so we'll have a chance next week to look at that. A lot of the data that you're seeing here, we had this summer, it was incorporated into the building of work plans for this coming school year, it's been incorporated into the school work plans. So the work that is underway this school year is already in consideration of the data that we're looking at tonight. It's also a key basis for the reflection that you'll see next week and have opportunity to provide feedback on, that our district equity leadership team had an opportunity to provide feedback on last week. And it'll also be part of what helps us determine how to develop our work plans for next year. So I just, I meant to say that earlier, and I appreciate the opportunity to just situate what we're talking about in the context that while the data are sobering, they are not new to us, they have informed the work that we're doing this year, and they inform our approach to the work as we go forward. And we'll have more chance to talk about the specifics of what that work is, what we're doing to make it more coherent, et cetera, at next week's meeting, too.
I was going to, I have one more question. So, you know, again, I sometimes try to, I try to question data, again, in some of the accuracy of it, and particularly for a lot of our standardized tests. How much could you attribute some of the gaps to change? to changes in in the tests, right? So let's say, let's take Park, for instance. Park has gone through, again, a different iteration, right? We started off with this larger Park test that actually just, for me, I think, as an educator, as a parent, I think is a total waste of time. And I know that it, I don't feel it's it's an adequate measure, but it's something that we have to take where it's mandated. And of course, people complain, school districts complain, parents complain, and they've shortened the test, right? So, you know, given how how tests, and these assessment tools are changed constantly, how much do you think that impacts what we're seeing here in regards to outcomes?
So let me take each assessment one at a time. In regard to the Park, there was a major change to the assessment between 2015 and 2016, and that's why I don't recommend that we even consider comparing 2015 to 2016. The test was shortened, the test was changed fundamentally, and I don't believe, despite the psychometrics that were done at the state level, that you can compare the 2015 and the 2016 data. There were no changes to the test construction or its scoring between 2016 and 2017. So I think those, it is fair to compare those two data points. I think, as we think about it statewide, I don't think you are alone, and perhaps not in the minority, in the opinion that you just expressed. And so I'm not sure the extent to which teachers, students, and parents across the state have invested themselves in this test in a way where each student feels the need to demonstrate their skills to the best of their ability. And that certainly, depending on how that works out in any particular school district or across the state, can have some effect on what the results are, right? Students must take the test seriously and find value in the test in order for the test to be an accurate measure.
Sure.
So I don't have any specific belief that it's not an accurate measure, but it's a bigger concern than, for example, five or 10 years ago, when we were consistently using the ISET, and there was a accountability system at the state level that, for better or for worse, a lot of folks were invested in.
Thank you.
In terms of the MAP, I'm not aware of any changes to the assessment. And I think our level of implementation and the engagement of staff and students with that assessment is fairly consistent across the last several years. And so I do believe those data are comparable over time.
Okay. Again, I just want to reiterate, so so I know the next week, we're going to talk about, okay, so what is it that we do about this? And again, if we can include some of that map math data in Spanish, from the Spanish version of the test, as well as some of the access data to show, you know, English language proficiency, how English language proficiency and progress unfolds, and how that impacts the success of of English learners, that would be really helpful.
So just to set expectations, we're certainly happy to run some additional data. That board packets do on Thursday, and so.
Okay, yeah. Okay, I'm sorry. Whatever's reasonable for you. I don't want to, yeah. Want to be mindful.
I only have one comment with regards to the ISEL, and I think it's the the communication that we're putting out into the community. I think there's a sense that we're not sending our kids ready for kindergarten, and just the notion that our preschoolers are not tested. And so there was, you know, some comments around the community about, you know, what can we do to better, you know, better prepare our preschoolers? And I in no way want our community to to think that we're testing our preschoolers, and that because we didn't prepare them here is why they're doing bad on ISEL in kindergarten. So just the the language, how that's phrased, I think is important, because there is, there are conversations in our community about accountability. And so as we're talking about this school action plan, like, I really would love for us to look at JEH as a school and start looking at the things that we could do better to educate our community about how we get all of our incoming incoming kindergarteners, and what that means. So as we have, you know, representatives from Cradle to Career, how how is the community, are we really, you know, backing up that information? Because I think that there's misinformation out there as far as what's actually taking place in early childhood, and how we can do a better job in ensuring that that we feel better about kindergarten readiness. And so that that was one of my my big concerns about this report, and how we communicate that to to our community members, but also, more importantly, how we work with parents to ensure that, you know, the kids that aren't coming to JEH, the partners that we work with in in our community, the students that aren't going to preschool at all, how we're how we're really translating that information to our community in a way that they 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 know what these scores mean. And that by no means kindergarten, people don't feel like their kindergarteners aren't ready, you know, like, if we're already starting out, kindergartners saying that they they're performing bad, that's, I think psychologically, that has an effect on on students and parents. And also, I, you know, we had this conversation earlier in the year, environmentally, and, you know, 2017 was a very difficult year. And I would just, you know, put that out there in terms of of scores and the environment that our that our kids are in. And I think that that there that there's, there's got to be some impact on scores when it comes to just performance and anxiety and everything that that took place last year.
I think to add to that, you know, we have to acknowledge that our school system was enduring
Right.
a crisis last year, too. And
Luckily, yeah.
there are going to be consequent, you know, you can't really, you can't really measure it, but there are going to be impacts of that from anxiety around what's happening with the school to, you know, the effort and time and attention that we had to put to, you know, moving our, addressing our financial crisis. And so there's this big environment issue, and then there's the smaller, more, you know, directly that what's going on in our own school district, that you, we can't quantify the impact, but I'm sure there has been.
Yeah, I think it's in there.
Thanks for raising that.
Yeah. And to, just, you know, how how we're working with with teachers to, you know, to diffuse this information, because, you know, I think that they they take the grunt of a lot of this, you know, these numbers, and, you know, their performance, and just ensuring that that we're bringing them into the conversation, and also just helping them make sense of that. I think, you know, it's really, I can't imagine being an educator and having to face these numbers and then somehow feeling responsible for that. And, you know, I think that we have some of the best educators in the state. And so I just, I I I hear the the teachers, and I hope, I know that it's a lot of of work that we have ahead of us, but I still have an incredible amount of trust and respect for for our educators.
I would just add to the the comment about kindergarten readiness, because, and as I see Sheila here, you know, as I'm on the parent and caregiver empowerment team, and we did work with a focus group of parents of of young children. And one of the things that we learned, that we weren't even necessarily trying to learn, but is, there's a lot of anxiety around the term kindergarten readiness. And, you know, especially when we're looking at ISEL, and it is a very narrow measure, you know, maybe we consider changing the language that we use around, you know, it's reading readiness or literacy, you know, however we want to term it. But there are a lot of other factors that go into being ready for kindergarten, and ISEL does not necessarily measure those. So we might want to consider, I think it's an excellent point to raise, that it does, it creates some anxiety to tell parents that their children are not necessarily kindergarten ready, when they are. They might just not be reading ready.
You just got to be five.
What's that?
You just got to be five.
Just got to be five, exactly.
So, I mean, I want to, I want to punctuate what you just said. And I know, I was at, with 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 Joyce and and Paul, we were at a, what was called the Kids Summit. So Kids is an assessment that was rolled out by the state this year. It's a kindergarten individual development survey. And what it is, it's a very comprehensive test, very similar to Teaching Strategies Gold, but at a kindergarten level, and it measures, you know, language arts, reading, math, social emotional development. So you get this whole holistic view of a child. And it's mainly observational. So you take notes, you create these portfolios to kind of see how kids developing, you collect their work, very developmentally appropriate, right? And and I really want to go back to what you said and what you heard from parents, is that, again, it's, you know, this kindergarten readiness thing is, it's a misnomer. It is, gives kids, gives families and kids anxiety. I mean, we know from our Teaching Strategies Gold, as Paul shared, that the kids are doing doing well, they're growing. And then, so then we have to flip that. I think we can, instead of kindergarten readiness, are we ready for, is K-12 ready for our kindergarten, for our preschoolers? You know, are we, are we, are we ready to serve them? Because they're ready. They've developed, right? Can we improve things? I'm sure we can in JEH and in across our programs and evidence to really better serve our kids. But but I think in early childhood, those holistic supports are built in, right? It's just a matter of how conable we are in regards to to really continuing to support the whole child and the whole family. So so what can we do here in JEH to ensure that, again, and and once they leave JEH, to to continue that holistic support that kids need, particularly from from zero, age zero, to to third grade? So, I mean, I think that's part of, will be part of the conversations we have in the task force that's coming up later on this month. I know we're going to talk about kids. And and I really think we, as a board, kind of really have to look at, maybe, the the issue is that there's some best practices from early childhood that they actually need to be elevated to kindergarten, first and second and third grade. And again, there's districts that are working on a continuum to try to connect all of those practices. I know last year, we had, you know, Cradle to Career, along with our district, hosted an early childhood kindergarten summit, where teachers were able to get together and talk about what expectations were, how they how they work with their kids. I really, I really think that's, that is where we start. It's this grassroots thing where you get professionals sitting down and talking with one another, and planning, and and connecting. Because, again, we 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 continue to work in silos, and we know that that, again, we, nobody does it alone. We can't do it alone. The school district can't can't solve poverty. We're a part of that solution. We're part of, you know, again, we have to work with our city colleagues, that we know, the Park District, with, you know, you know, just pull together our resources, which we already do, to a certain extent. But I'm sure, again, that that's kind of what Cradle to Career is kind of helping us do. And in part of the conversation that we're having around the task force, I think that is what we're really set on doing, is how do we leverage all these relationships, the expertise from, we got some incredible experts that are part of that conversation. And we're going to see how we're going to, how this will proceed in better outcomes for all kids.
So being mindful of the time and knowing that this conversation is part and parcel of, you know, conversations that we're going to have next week around the equity strategic plan crosswalk and recommendations regarding staffing structures, I do want to, like I said, be mindful of the time, but I did, I just had a couple of questions.
Yeah.
I don't know if we need a long discussion about them. One, I'll echo that I think last year was a difficult year nationally and locally, in terms of, I think, teacher morale, probably in the fall, and then perhaps continuing throughout the year. There are a lot of negotiations in addition to the financial uncertainty. I also heard a little bit of conversation about potentially, potential technical issues with MAP assessment in terms of students not taking the assessment correctly on the first time, having technical errors with computers. So I don't know how much of that has been factored in, but I'm curious at a later date if there's any word on that, because that's certainly important, I think, to the analysis. Addition, in addition to, so I also had this this challenge with the data. We're comparing racially disaggregated data to free and reduced lunch data and IEP data, and I think sex identity data, right? But we don't have it disaggregated by race. And so it really doesn't, it's like comparing apples to oranges in terms of, so I was curious, how do we, is it possible to disaggregate the IEP data, the free and reduced lunch data? And also, with our work on considering creating a more, a safe space for students who are gender non-binary and trans, that we do have a binary gender identity in our reporting. I think it's male and female. So I'm sure that we, if, I'm not sure, but I'm imagining that if we did try to disaggregate that data, we wouldn't have a sample size large enough in order to report on non-binary students, but not making them invisible, I think is also something to consider, to to align our policy discussions with the reports and equity conversations we're having. And also a question in terms of, like, a technical issue with the report is that I'm guessing that it's not longitudinal, right? You have to, the third grade cohort from 2016 is the fourth grade cohort from 2017. Well, that's confused, you know, they can be confusing. So I don't know if there's a way to call that out for different slides, like, if you're looking for longitudinal data to compare cohorts of students, even though there may be shifting in those actual student populations, like, calling out that for folks who are reviewing the report, that they need to look at the third, like, they need to look at it diagonally, or if there's a different way, if we're reporting on cohorts of students versus just grade levels. Also, I don't know if it will be helpful in the narrative somewhere to, like, when we're looking at 21, to be consistent about how we're calling out timeframes. So sometimes we were talking about 2015 to 2017, other times 2014 to 2017. And I'm sure it was just to call out trends, but it's also not, it's also like comparing apples to oranges in terms of data. But also, like, between 2015 and 2017, that's, you know, four grade level, or 2014 and 2017, that's at four grade levels of students that are, have left the district, as as Joey was referring to. So how do we, is there any commentary on how that has impacted the data? When the, we had the conversation about the assessment tools changing, if they did or not, is, can that be inserted in the report? Because it makes, those are all questions that I was I was constantly running through my head as I was reading the report, and it made it more, it made it more complicated for me to ask questions of the data, because I was constantly questioning what assumptions were going into the data. So those were just some technical. I think the analysis is what we're going to talk about next week. I will say, though, that I don't know if I'm remembering all of the TS Gold data correctly, but I don't think all of the TS Gold data shows the kind of positive trends that we're referring to, which doesn't necessarily mean that we shouldn't, I mean, have a comprehensive look at performance, but, or performance, I don't know what the best way to describe it is, at experience that children are having. But I'm not sure that the TS Gold data is that much different than the ISEL, the ISEL data. And and, yeah, I mean, we talked about it with the, when we talked about JEH, but the zero through, any measurement that we have of, like, the impact of our zero to five, not isolating that from the conversation that we're having. And I think we've had ongoing conversations about being more asset-based in how we talk about outcomes, be more holistic. And so I think that that's just like, for me, each time I read these reports, it's an ongoing question.
Right. And I would, you know, I agree, and I do want to, again, call out the, and I think in the past, we have seen in the reports where we do disaggregate, I don't know if we've done it with IEP, but certainly with free and reduced lunch. And I do see on Table 6 on page 15, that we do have free and reduced lunch, a full price disaggregated by race. And I think it's worth pointing out that when we look at that, you know, we see in our own data, what we see is a national trend, that even free and reduced lunch, white students are perform, outperforming, certainly outperforming black students, and relatively comparable to Hispanic students. So I think it's important to call that out, and it just highlights why the the focus on racial equity and equity work we do is so important.
Among Anya's questions, I think there's many things to talk about, but the one thing I would not want to leave on the table is the issue about the reliability of the MAP assessment. So my department maintains a help desk for any teachers who are having issues during testing. In these last couple of years, our our call
In these last couple of years, our, our call volume during MAP testing has been very small compared to previous years. Between the two tests, I would say that PARK is typically the one where we get more calls. But because teachers give MAP three times a year, there are, of course, situations where technology malfunctions, but it is typically not anything that rises to the level of ever creating a help desk ticket, or often not even rising to the level of contacting the building-level coordinator. And so I'm not aware of any district-wide, building-wide, grade-level issues. And we have touchpoints with our MAP coordinators several times a year, and they haven't been reporting any consistent problems. So I believe if there were any issues that were persistent and more than one-off, that I would be aware of it because of the frequent communication we have with those coordinators and because of her, our ticketing system. So I don't think that's a concern.
The few times that we hear of problems, many times a young person will hit the button in the upper corner, which is the on and off button. And so, and so that, that's something that we can work with, with the kids and with their teachers to be careful as they're working.
And even MAP this year added the disruption monitor for individual proctors, so teachers can monitor that in the classroom during testing sessions. So even if, like, Peter doesn't see it on a macro level, an individual teacher could see if there's inactivity or other kinds of disruptions in their own classroom. Pretty easily, it starts flashing.
Thank you. Were there any other questions, comments?
Well, thank you very much for the report. I mean, clearly, there is a lot of work to do, and so I think we all look forward to next week's discussion where we can start talking more specifically about strategies. And so with that, if there is no further business to come before the board, I find this meeting adjourned at nine fifty-seven, just shy of 10 o'clock. So, thank you all. If all can remember to complete your monitoring forms and turn them into a DILA.